Here.
Manetza.
Here. We have one item on our work session agenda this evening. That's the Warber Drain Project Report and Discussion. And so at this point, do we turn it over to Pat or Derek?
Okay, well Derek, I'll get things started off if that's okay.
Sounds good.
The township petitioned the county water resource commissioner early, well, late last year, or probably early last year, to repair and restore the Warber Drain, which drains most of the south side of the city of Grand Haven. We've been following and being a part of the discussions as the design and development of the project has gone along. Now, working with the water resource commissioner is not something that we're very conversant in because in the city of Grand Haven, of course, we have storm sewers running underneath most of our streets and we don't have these open county drains, or at least very few of them. And the Warber Drain is certainly the most significant one, other than the Grand River. I guess the Grand River is the biggest one, followed by the Warber Drain. The township wanted to make some improvements along particularly the south side of Robbins Road, put in some sidewalk, and the drain underneath there is shot. Derek could attest to that. So we agreed that that was a project that needed to be done and did not challenge the township's request to have a project developed to repair significant parts of that drain underneath Robbins Road from Ferry Street to Beechtree, right Derek?
That's correct.
Okay. So that work has been done and I will put up on your screen a picture of the district that was defined. And you can see it's much of the south part of Grand Haven, as I said. The larger outlined area is the entire area that drains into the Warber Drain. The areas in green are in Grand Haven Charter Township. And the project is split into two distinct categories. One category is the smaller project money-wise, but the bigger project property-wise. So that is the one that covers the entire drainage district. It entails, I'm not sure if you can see my cursor. Ah, you can.
You can see it.
Yes, we can.
There's a drain that runs somewhere, you know, just north of White Pine School. I think it's over in this vicinity. Yeah, I guess it runs right along here. Right, Denny?
That's right, yep.
And comes over and eventually dumps out into the bayous, right over here by Denny's picture. So that drain along there needs to be cleaned out and some work done to that. That's the relatively smaller cost portion, and that will be apportioned on the entire district. So that's some 1,100 properties, I believe, Derek?
Roughly, yep.
Yeah.
So you take that smaller, I think as bid that was somewhere in the mid-sixties, Derek, sixty-some thousand dollars?
Correct.
Yeah, our initial estimates were forty thousand. It did come in higher than that, so it's somewhere maybe close to seventy thousand. The second part of the project is smaller geographically, but much larger financially. The area outlined with this on my screen, it's kind of chartreuse line, is all part of the smaller geographical project, but much larger financially project. And I think the as-bid cost on that, Derek, was maybe 1.3 million, 1.?
Yeah, it's just, just north of, 1.4 million, actually.
Okay. So really, this is pretty close.
It came in very close to bid.
Okay, so you've got a very small project, spread over a great number of properties, and then a very big project, spread over a relatively many fewer. I think there's 58 properties that comprise this area. So you've got 1.4 million divided by 58, some pretty hefty numbers there. And your packet contains considerable, I'm gonna mute everybody so that if, when it's time to talk about this, we can do that. I went through and listed the actual impacts on all of the properties in your packet and in the public packet, so everybody can see this. You can see Grand Haven City is looking at, just for our assessment of the public rights of way, would be, you know, north of a quarter million dollars, 263,000. But you can also see many of these other properties are facing some pretty significant special assessments under this scenario, and hopefully you've had a chance to look that over. I did not include the 1,100 address list, where there's 1,100 properties, but of that much larger area that I was talking about. You know, most of those assessments are, you know, fifty dollars or something, you know, they're very small amounts, a hundred dollars, spread over 20 years. It hardly makes sense to try to set up those assessment rolls. It's sort of far-fetched to think we would set up a 20-year assessment and spread those costs over 20 years when they're so small. So I just wanted to give you some ideas of some of the different ways you might consider going here. The first was allow the resource commissioner to just go ahead and spread both projects on all properties, which means that you would just back off and let the water resource commissioner do his elective duty, which is to spread the costs of both projects on all of those properties. A second option, if that one's not the way that you want to go, would be for the city to assume responsibility for that smaller project, pay it all at once, and then ask the county water resource commissioner to spread the project over all payers for that much bigger project with fewer payers. A third option would be that the city assumes responsibility for both projects and spreads the cost over a 20-year bond period. Let the county water resource commissioner spread it for us. And looking at that, we would pay somewhere in the $65,000 per year range over the next 20 years. And a fourth option is that you assume responsibility for both projects. You go ahead and issue debt to cover both projects, and that would be significantly cheaper. Conservatively, I said that it'd be about 60,000 a year, probably be less than that. Interest rates are incredibly low right now. Of course, there are some bizarre things going on in the financial markets, so it'd be hard to call it, but, you know, I believe that it would be at least 1% cheaper per year for the city to borrow it, rather than let the county road commission borrow it, I'm sorry, county water resource commission borrow it, because they're just gonna bump your rate 1%, because they've got, you know, significant administrative involvement. So sorry to be so long-winded, I just kind of wanted to walk through each of those possibilities. You know, I've unmuted everybody's mics, so I'm not sure if you have questions. I know I did have some discussion with council member Dennis Scott, who correctly pointed out, when we last did the Vincent Drain Project, the city did absorb the full assessment, but I think that assessment was somewhere in the $20,000 range, six or eight years ago.
So when you say city assumes responsibility of projects, we still end up spreading the cost over the private properties?
I would suggest if you were inclined to spread it over the private properties, you just let the county water resource commissioner do that work.
Okay, so, so if the city assumes responsibility, we're just gonna pay it out of the general fund?
Correct, correct. Or out of a streets fund. The theory there, just so I can, you know, put a little bit of my thought process behind that, and I, it's not necessarily a recommendation, I'm just putting options out there for you guys. The theory is that throughout the city, we have storm drains in all of our roads, and we all pay gas taxes and we all pay our property taxes, and it does pay to maintain that storm drainage system. It just so happens in this part of the city, much of the drainage goes into the Warber Drain, which is a separate piece of infrastructure technically controlled by the county. So it's not necessarily part of your road system, but it behaves like any other drain in terms of its functionality.
What percentage of the city is drained by this drain?
I don't have an exact number for you. Am I still sharing? I'm sorry.
Looks like at least the third of the city.
Yeah. So I'm not, does anybody have questions, or is there a preferred approach that we want to talk about?
Did they make that drain bigger, Pat? Did they increase the size of that drain or not?
Derek?
Uh, no, we did not. It's gonna be the same size. Elevations to reconstruct that with a larger drain were just way too cost prohibitive.
Okay, so it had nothing to do with, okay, the development over there, okay.
You didn't, you didn't need more capacity, did you?
No, I mean, we talked about that. We could put in a elliptical pipe, but the cost of that was significant, and since we're not going all the way to the outflow of the, of the open ditch, we weren't reconstructing Griffin Street from Robbins to the ditch, to the open drain. Yeah, it was just way too costly to change it. They said, they did do some study of the capacity and said the capacity seems to be fine. The failure of the, of the, you know, the actual drain itself was it was built open joint. And every joint is failing and allowing it, and we cleaned that shortly after I arrived and tried to televise it and for the water resource commission with so-so luck to get them as much information as we could with such a failed drain.
Hmm. When was the last time that work was done on this, Derek? Do we know?
Oh, it was decades and decades ago, probably, I mean, probably from the original construction is what's failing, so.
I remember in 67, that was.
Time before we'd have to.
That was, they redone Robbins Road and they put a new drain in there too, so probably by 67, 68, sometime in there. But, you know, I think they increased the size of it when they did it. I think there was a drain there before, but they increased the size of it and it was brand-new pipes, that's, you know, that's quite, that's quite a while ago, so. But I just was concerned that they were building, making a bigger pipe there because of the, you know, the new development over there, but that's not the case. Now, Griffin Street's already bigger than Robbins Road, though. I mean, you could have increased the size with that, because what goes down Griffin Street is bigger than Robin Road.
Yeah, there's a 24-inch down Robbins Road, and then at the ends, it drops down to about 12 inches. At Griffin, it's 30. But the problem with, with doing that, you know, is, as you know, we end up cover issues, invert elevation issues, and it just, it wasn't really necessary. That's why we looked into the, of the oval pipe, in case we wanted to increase the size, but.
Griffin's gotta be bigger than 30, because I went down that, I, I, we used to, we walked down that drain and before all the, all the confined space entry stuff was involved, but we walked down that pipe and repaired all the, all the joints in there, because those joints were leaking, you know, and so, but we could get down there and repair them the other side, so that's what we did.
My understanding is, is right at the intersection, which is where we're tying into the repair, it was 30.
Right, that's 30 right there, 30 intersection, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's.
Okay, all right, okay.
I believe, yeah, it gets bigger farther up.
Yeah, it gets bigger down, yeah, it does, it goes, I, I'm not sure we went all the way to the intersection, but we went, we went from the first driveway, from, you know, from that first drive that goes into Griffin School, I think, that's where we started, and then we walked, we walked all the way down to the drain, so. And I know it's gotta be, that's gotta be at least four, maybe, maybe four and a half, maybe bigger than that, I don't know, I mean, we could go right through it, no problem at all, so.
Right.
I'll come back to Pat's earlier question about, do we have a preferred option? I guess, just from my point of view, the least costly option would probably be the best, and I would view it as a general utility of the city as opposed to something serving only certain properties.
So are you suggesting that we would accept responsibility for that with the, you know, and treat it like a city storm drain?
I guess that's what I was thinking, that sounded like the best fit for these options you've got here. And it sounds like the cheapest way to go.
You know, I would, just, an observation I would make is that we've done an awful lot of work here the last, you know, 15 or 20 years, and it's been voted millage for the most part, that is paid by the entire city. We all pay that, and so if I was one of those residents in the one-third of town, I would feel like, well, I've been paying right along on my property taxes for all these storm drains everywhere else, and now a drainage improvement in my, my neighborhood, I have to pay for directly, that, that to some might seem inequitable.
So isn't that what, isn't that what I just said? Were you gonna treat it as a general utility?
I think so, yeah.
So that your last option here, if that's.
That's the cheapest, that's what we should do.
Uh, per year for the next 20 years, that's out of the general fund. Everybody's paying for that. Correct?
Correct, the whole city.
Just pulling this together.
I agree. That's the way we do all of our other drains. I mean, this, this drain, you know, even though it's part of the county drain, it's more of an open drain kind of a scenario, but, but all of our other drains, we take care of them, no matter, you know, so this is one that we just don't. And again, like the Vincent Drain, I mean, we had property owners in Grand Haven that when the Vincent Drain needed repair, we just stepped up and we took, we, and that's only $20,000, but really, you know, we did it because we do it all over town, that's what we do, but I hate to get too, too much in this conversation, because really, I mean, I, I did get a notice on this, and I'm responsible for part of this bill, so. I didn't say too much, but.
I, I tend to agree with Bob. Taxes are paid by everybody that covers, you know, all the other drains around town. I don't see a reason that these folks would, should have to step up and pitch in extra, you know, for ones in their section, that, that wouldn't be right.
Yeah, by spreading it out over 20 years, it'd be well worth it for us to take it over as a city itself. It is a drain that we're responsible for, so it's still an outflow.
You know, we're gonna be paying a chunk on this anyway. It looks like, you know, over a quarter of a million dollars of it's already on, you know, in the city right away that we're gonna have to pay for as a city regardless. We're looking at a little over $10 million that we're discussing whether or not we should take that on, or that should be assessed, so I'm okay with that, that direction.
Then, how would this be, this would be bonded then, Pat?
Come again, please?
This would be bonded debt then, and we'd be paying 60,000 per year against?
Correct, we would go out, you know, I would start the wheels in motion right away to get that moving. We would contact a financial advisor, probably Warren Kramer at Baird, and also our bond counsel at Dickinson Wright. I would notify the water resource commissioner this week and let them know that we intend to go forward and fund it ourselves, so they don't have to worry about doing that. And then we would be bringing those things to you for votes. Little uncertainty right now, I'm not sure whose offices will be open and what the financial markets will be doing, but we bring it forward as quickly as we could.
So, we just passed a, on our last ballot, we just passed a infrastructure, an infrastructure millage to replace bonded debt on infrastructure. So we would not be using that money, this would be a separate expense?
Well, that would be an option, I guess I hadn't thought of that, but that would be discretionary to future city councils if you wanted to use a portion of that money to pay for this drain. I believe that it is infrastructure and it would be acceptable, so.
I mean, one of the, one of the items we discussed was replacing debt with pay-as-you-go, and that was one of the reasons why we put this on the ballot and that people bought into it, so I think we need to at least consider whether this falls into the same category of expenses.
I very much agree on that, yep.
I mean, we don't have to decide that right now, but I think that's something we ought to, we ought to consider.
Yep.
So we ought to consider paying for it all at once with millage, or not paying for it with that future voted money, because that was meant for pay-as-you-go?
Well, I guess that you'll have to pay upfront for the cost of this. But then, where's the money coming from? I mean, what, the whole goal here was to minimize our debt going forward. It sounds like we're just buying into another debt.
I would be open to seeing what we could propose on that, as far as paying it all upfront and how that would look.
Well, it would look like, the only thing I can think of, off the top of my head, would be it would look like, you know, an additional, over one mil on your tax bill this next year. As you approve the budget, you levy an additional mil.
For 20 years, Pat?
No, I'd just, one time would get you $600,000 and pay the lion's share of this project, and then maybe the rest, we'd, we'd maybe borrow a quarter million and pay the rest with one full mil upfront, I, you know.
Well, let's, let's figure out how that actually works. This may not be the right implication for that thinking.
I hate to use, I hate to use all that much money for infrastructure, then we got, we got all these projects that we still have to get done, and here we're using, you know, money that we were gonna do other projects with, and I know it's a need that we have to do, but I have a hard time using future money that we know that we have some really bad streets that need to be repaired and water and sewer lines that need to be done too, so it's, you know, maybe we can split it up between the two of, I, I guess, I, I'm prepared to look at all the options right now, but I hate to use all that money that we're gonna get in future, in future revenue, and then not be able to do any more projects with it.
Would, you know, here's a thought. We could look at a shorter term for the debt schedule instead of 20 years, if, if the long-term, you know, incurring additional debt. And again, this is a county drain project that we really don't have control over, it's happening. Whether we want it to happen or not, the county water resource commissioner is going to build this drain, and he's either gonna spread the cost on all those properties that I showed you, or we can step up and find a way to finance it. It's not optional for us at this point. So the, and if, if it's not optional for us, whether the county water resource commissioner picked it up or not, I think Derek would attest that it was going to collapse in the very foreseeable future, we would have had a, a major problem on our hands, so at least we're being proactive and probably saving money by getting it done before it collapses.
Agreed.
But we certainly can't wait for money to roll in from future villages, something will have to be done now.
Pat? Could, could we potentially bond and set the bonds up that they could be callable in five or 10 years?
Absolutely. We could do that.
So you can borrow it now and say, well, when the millage comes on, we can block the window to, hey, we're gonna pay it off this year, limit our debt option?
That's an option.
I think they, I think that we have pretty much consensus that we, we would take this on ourselves and treat it as a general utility and not charge property owners individually. If that helps, at least we've agreed to something.
Well, one thing that I think I'm hearing loud and clear is we don't want to pay the extra 1% and have somebody else borrow money for us.
No.
And we do want it to be on as a general utility, so those are two very big things that I've got answered tonight. What I'll do is get actionable items on a coming agenda that is either a, a shorter term debt or the full 20 years, but like Derek said, make it that we can call it in five years. We'll pay a slightly higher rate for that privilege to be able to call it early, but in five years, if you decide in the next four years, you wanna collect a little more money so that you can pay it all off in five years, we can set that up, we can ladder that out. Or you might decide as time goes forward, as Denny said, you wanna use more of that money in projects today, and you've decided to let, let that bond ride out its life, but I can present it, I, I think that callable bond's a pretty good idea, Derek.
Okay. Certainly worth looking at.
Okay.
And then that lets, then that way, Denny doesn't have to recuse himself, because he's no longer an individual payer.
Well, Pat?
Yeah.
There was something that I couldn't do at this meeting, in the next council meeting, I was supposed to stand up and say Derek Gaitis, Public Works Director at 1603 Stewart Street. I'm actually in the drain, this drain district as well. My new home.
Oh, you're gonna have to recuse yourself.
Absolutely.
No voting for you.
But for now, you're still a township resident, so goodbye.
Wow, that's powerful.
Oh, this is good.
That was pretty.
Well, there's dozens of advantages.
So would you like to get a quick update from either Derek or Jeff on COVID-related items at 7:00?
I have just one thing to say, Pat.
Yes, sir.
Is that as long as, if we're gonna go with the reset, the refinancing in that in a shorter term, and as long as it's not gonna cost us a whole lot more, you know, the 1%, I'm talking about, if it's gonna come close to being the 1%, I, I don't wanna go that route, I just soon have to try and make it as more affordable possible we can. So if we can go with the refi, with the, with the bond issue with a shorter term, then we can pay off, we gotta make sure that it stays within our, in our captions that we need.
Sounds good.
Yep.
Other than that, we can move on to something else, then.
Yeah, you got like three minutes.
So Jeff, would you like to give us a quick summary of? How our public safety staffing is doing?
I would. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Jeff Lock, Director of Public Safety, coming from you live from my, coming at you live from my fireplace. Just to talk briefly about two wider view things, first for the city of Grand Haven and then specifically for the department. I think city of Grand Haven organization, with the plan that we had in place, the three-tier plan, I think it's worked out very well. I think we were about as prepared as we can be or could have been for this, so everybody's been working great together to move through the plan. You know, we started at tier one, now we're at tier three in the scope of two weeks. As far as the department, we're also in really good shape, we're fully staffed, we've made some modifications to our customer service contact points, so the help desk right now, the lobby as of today is closed, we're still available for minor issues by phone and email, our emergency phone in the lobby is still active. Our business phone, our business admin number during the day will be forwarded to a cell phone and still answered during business hours, so you'll still talk to the same voice, however, that voice will be working from home. So we'll still get all those calls answered, all those questions answered, just reducing contact with the public, but still providing the service that our residents need. As far as operationally for the department members, we're still fully staffed on the road, we're still responding to any law enforcement, fire, or emergency medical service calls that, that, you know, folks that need us. One thing we are seeing is our, people are being really great with taking care of the minor stuff over the phone or over email. One thing we are seeing with heightened tensions in the community is, you know, more domestic-type calls, more calls with heightened danger level. I don't know if you might have saw in the, in the paper the other day, we had a call where an officer had a gun pointed at him, at a residence. So I think with what's going on nationally and in our state and community, we're gonna continue to see some heightened stress levels, but we're, we're prepared to respond to that as well.
These are trying times.
They are trying times, it puts a lot of pressure on, on everyone in the community in, in all different ways, so unprecedented.
Thanks, Jeff.
All right, thanks, thanks, Jeff. Uh, it is, according to my clock, it is now 7:30. All right. Thanks, thanks, Jeff. It is according to my clock, it is now seven thirty. And so I'm going to close the special work session. I'll use my gavel. And we will now open our regular, open our virtual special city council meeting for March twenty-third, twenty twenty. Just like to, word of explanation here. We have people online viewing. It's very unusual setting for us. So welcome to the sign-line virtual special meeting. Format's been made possible by the Governor's Executive Order Number twenty-two, twenty twenty dash fifteen, and is necessitated by the need to protect the public by slowing the spread of the COVID-nineteen through public gatherings. So we're not having a gathering at City Hall. That City Hall is closed. This is uncharity for, territory for us. We're learning how to do this as we go, so please be patient. Linda, could you call a rule?
Dora?
Here.
Cummins?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Fritz?
Here.
Minnetza?
Here.
At this, at this point in the meeting, we would ordinarily, ordinarily hear an invocation, receive a blessing from an area pastor, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. This evening, we do not have the invocation. So I'm going to invite members of council and all those watching this meeting, hearing these words, to observe a few moments of silence, pray for guidance, and reflect on the immense challenges before us. Which most of us have never dealt. Each according to your own faiths, traditions, and sensibilities. Following that, we will say the pledge. So let's take a few moments. All right. Let's say pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands.
For which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So first, the next item on our agenda would be approval of procedures for electronic remote meetings. This is a packet. It is something that kinda gets us through this meeting and probably some future meetings. So Linda, would you like to read this or should we just, since everybody's read it?
Are you talking about the whole procedure or just?
Well, let me ask, let me ask it this way. First of all, do we need a motion for this?
Yes.
Okay. I would entertain a motion for accepting the procedures for electronic remote meetings.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, motion by Fritz, second by Dora, to accept procedures for electronic remote meetings. Are, are there any questions on the motion or on the procedures? No questions? Okay, let's vote.
Dora?
Yes.
Cummins?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
Minnetza?
Yes.
Okay, and next, we have our standard instructions for the viewing audience, which would be find the agenda on our website, open that. This evening, we're going to be having an unusual call to the audience, and that'll be in, in a few moments. But if you are, want to text or email us comments, you might wanna start typing now so that we can keep this meeting moving along. So next item would be appointments to boards and commissions. Linda, you wanna read this item?
Sure, give me just a second. So I just got kicked off of something here.
Oh, can we read it?
Uh, I think I can get it.
Okay.
All right. This is to appoint Jennifer Holland to the Duncan Park Board with a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, they have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second it.
Okay, motion by Fritz, second by Dora. Any questions on the motion?
Welcome to the board.
All right, ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a, a call?
Cummins?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
Dora?
Yes.
Minnetza?
Yes. So Linda, you and Ms. Holland will have to figure out how to do the swearing-in. Presumably it'll be remotely, you know, they can stand out in front of the hot City Hall outside.
It all depends too when the Duncan Park Board is gonna meet because right now they're, I don't think they're gonna be meeting, so it.
It may be a while. But they'll still need to be sworn in at some point in time.
Correct. I've already been in contact with her.
All right. Next, we would have approval of consent and regular agendas. Are there any changes to the agendas?
I would like to see the wave scooter one moved on the consent agenda.
Okay, you want to see this become new business?
Yes.
That becomes item eleven G? Any other changes? Anything from you, Pat?
Uh, no, sir. I'm all set.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the agendas.
I'll make the motion.
Second it.
Okay, motion by Fritz, second by Scott. Questions on the motion? We vote?
Pat?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
Dora?
Yes.
Cummins?
Yes.
Minnetza?
Yes.
Okay, now we're to the call to the audience. One of two opportunities. At this time, members of the audience may address council on any item, whether on the agenda or not. Those addressing councilor has provide their name and address will be limited to three minutes of speaking time. Counselor, your comments for future consideration will not have a response at this time. Either type your comment in on the Facebook Live feed or call six one six nine three five three two zero seven. Let the phone ring until it's answered. And if you get a busy signal, please wait, watch, and call back. We take all callers tonight. So while we're waiting for people to call on the phone, are there any written comments or emails that we should hear?
Linda, did you receive any emails?
I have not.
Ashley, have we gotten any Facebook comments yet with a name and address?
There are none at this time.
Okay, well, there is about a ten-second delay between, let me turn this on here. There's about a ten-second delay between what you're talking about and the Facebook, so that might take a minute. So if somebody did want to call at nine three five three two zero seven, that's real time. So I'm, I'm looking right at the phone, Your Honor. It is turned on and it is not lighting up.
Fourth caller wins a prize? Same prize the first three callers get. You get to talk to us.
First caller can have free admission to the next ten city council meetings.
All right.
Front row.
You couldn't sell that.
Well, the phone's not ringing. Have you gotten any typed comments, Ashley?
None at this time.
Okay, confident that we're on the air and.
Ashley, can I ask, does the Facebook Live feed tell you how many people are watching on Facebook?
We just had sixty-one people watching on Facebook.
We got a full house.
Yeah. You have a note, not a, not a public comment necessarily, but Jennifer Holland did comment that she is honored to be a part of the Duncan Park Commission, and thank you to council.
And we thank her for her service and good to see our citizens step up. So thank you for that. All right, well then, we will move on. There will be another opportunity for a call to the audience toward the end of the meeting. So if someone does, is trying to get through, then there'll be another opportunity. So don't give up on us. Now we'll move on to the consent agenda. Linda, can you read the consent agenda?
Special work session and regular council meeting minutes of March second, twenty twenty. Approved bills memo in the amount of three million thirty-five thousand two hundred ninety-four dollars and one cent. Approved the Grand Haven area public schools after prom activities on Saturday, May second, twenty twenty, at Mulligan's Hollow, and allow two food trucks in the back parking lot. Award the twenty twenty street resurfacing project to asphalt paving incorporating, and the net to exceed amount of one hundred thirty-seven thousand four hundred sixteen dollars and sixty cents, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the necessary documents. Approved the proposal from Kennedy Industries to repair and refurbish both the pump can and vertical turbine pump number three, located in the Northwest Ottawa Water Systems Low Service Pump Station in the amount of fifty-nine thousand nine hundred forty-three dollars and seventy-five cents, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the necessary documents. Approve House Bill fifty-four twenty-three regarding the redirection of bottle deposit funds from the State of Michigan to private beverage distributors. And last one.
Have a motion?
The move.
Second.
Yeah, a motion by Dora. Who seconded?
Fritz.
Fritz, Fritz seconded.
Fritz, here.
Okay, questions on any of these items?
I hope they get to have their prom, you know, they're great, all that, so hope it all goes.
I guess all we can do is say yes from our end. We can't really.
That's all we can do. Hope things go.
Yep. Hope, hope so as well.
I know how that is. I worked on prom when I was in high school. So I know exactly how that is. It's a lot of work for those kids to do. So hopefully, sooner or later, this all passes through for them. They can at least enjoy it sometime, even if it's not that, that time. We can also look at it and give it a different time for them.
I would like to comment on the item, the resolution opposing HB fifty-four twenty-three. We did have a little correspondence with Representative Lilly on this, although it was more, they put it a substitute for the original language, which was slightly less obnoxious than the original language, but I was, I don't think I was satisfied, nor was Mr. McGinnis. I don't think you guys were either, if you've been following this. But basically, they're taking an unclaimed bottle deposit fund and most of it used to go to a cleanup and redevelopment fund at Under Eagle, taking a big chunk of that and giving it to distributors as opposed, as opposed to cleaning up pollution, polluted sites. And we're thinking that that's probably not a very good idea.
I agree.
There are no other questions on the consent agenda. I guess we're ready to vote.
Fritz?
Yes.
Dora?
Yes.
Cummins?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Minnetza?
Yes.
Okay, first item of new business.
I'm very lucky. I'm working with three screens here. Okay. This first item is to approve a request from Dave Delmonte to leave his permanent vendor trailer and a duck at the North Shore Christianman's Parking Lot location overnight from June first, twenty twenty, through August thirty-first, twenty twenty, with possible extended dates, including the months of May and September, contingent upon approval from the State of Michigan Department of Natural Resources.
We have a motion.
The move.
Okay, I think it was Scott and Cummins. Okay, in that order?
That's fine with me.
Okay. Comments by council members?
Just a couple questions and, and then maybe some comments. I see there's four spots being taken up, plus their staff vehicles for this this summer. Do we have a, you know, a charge for this in our fee schedule for permanent location vendors? Just wondering how much that is and.
You want me to answer that, Pat?
Yeah, if you've got that information.
Um, I'm pretty sure, let me look at the paper. I'm pretty sure it's a hundred dollars a month. But I can double check that on the application here. Give me a moment. I can flip to it.
I know this is, as you're looking it up, I know there's, this is one of our locations that's on there, but I myself personally think maybe something like this would be more of a fit down our Schnook Pier when we get a level, to be honest with you. Something that we're kinda looking at for down there some, on that order.
Hey, Linda, it says one hundred dollars per calendar month.
That's correct.
Yep.
I talked, I talked to the gentleman. I had a meeting with him and I kinda wondered, you know, how, how much business he'd have because of the, the pier being so, so far, you know, the water.
It's underwater.
Yeah, well, yes, sometimes the time it is. You're right. And so I wondered about that, but he said, because the marina's right there, he thinks he's gonna get some, some business from the marina, which is I thought maybe there's a possibility there, and he really wanted to be there. So I really, like you said, Mike, it's one of the places that we have designated to put one. So I really don't have a problem with it. It started being overnight. Probably, he said with the, with the Health Department, didn't want him to disconnect and then, then reconnect onto another electric, like take it home and to put it on, you know, to put it on his own electricity back, back and forth. They were a little concerned about the refrigeration of some of the products that way. So they, 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 they will actually ask him to leave it overnight. And I don't have a problem with that myself, but, you know, unless you guys do, but I really don't.
Yeah. I don't.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I don't have a, yeah, it's definitely on the desired, you know, location for permanent location vendors. I don't see a concern, you know, this, this particular vendor has a lot of years of experience in the tri-cities and I think it'd be a great option, the, the tryout up there, although certainly the concern related to the, the pier being underwater and maybe lessening, you know, lessening some business because of that would be an issue. But, you know, it just seems like, you know, in a normal year, if the, if the, the water level was reasonable and a lot of folks were fishing out there, that is a lot of spots to take up for a fairly low fee of a hundred dollars. That's something that maybe we can look at. I know we just looked at our, our fee schedule and, and made some changes to that. Maybe we can take a look at that as we're approving our budgets here. But I don't have any concerns with this.
Danny, you talked with him and he said something about electricity. Is that electricity coming from us or is he supplying that from, where is the electricity? They wanted, they didn't want him to disconnect?
There's a pole. He's gonna bring underground electricity from the pole. He's paying for the whole thing to come down the pole and underground to his, to his facility. So, and he said that, I guess Derek looked at it and him and Derek come up with a, a spot where they could put it and where they could, like, just do it really easy. So.
I don't have a problem if that's what he wants to do. It's, it's not a big deal.
Well, all right, here's, here's what I think. I went, I spent some time, we're looking through the ordinance and the permanent vendor. Okay, Miss Prentice. Pat, you must be fishing around for something on my screen.
Yeah, cuz we're all off the screen.
All right, so looking at this, the way our, our permanent location vendor is set up, it's set up for somebody who breaks down every day and really accommodates somebody who is going to be there during the day, breaks down, comes back the next day, not a permanent presence, presence on that location. And then if they, and if that were the case, it wouldn't be before us tonight, because that would be something that would be created administratively. When they're going to be there overnight, especially when they're gonna be there for weeks or months, one thing, it does have, council does have to approve that variance in our, in our ordinance. Now it becomes a, a permanent presence in that location. Not only does it consume several parking spaces of a fairly small parking lot, but also becomes, in my opinion, can become a nuisance to the neighbors. My original thought was that, well, this is very different from the zoning for this area. It's a, it's a zone for all these homes and there's no buffer of any kind. But as a, as a daily use, breaking down every day, that wouldn't matter. Wouldn't really become a land use per se. But I think that it's going to be there all the time, day after day, day and night, that now I think it's, I now I think it ought to be considered in the context of whether there's any kind of buffering, any kind of shielding or screening, whether or not it's gonna be a nuisance to the neighborhood. If you look at a place like Mulligan's Hollow, which is also any single-family neighborhood, it doesn't matter so much there if, if we have a truck that sits there. It's at State Park, which is a DNR property. They're, they're glad to have these vehicles, but none of those impinge on anybody's home or anybody's quality of life. So in my opinion, exercising our ability to keep this in this location overnight for an extended period of time, probably for, for some months, is for an extended period of time, probably for, for some months, is, uh, I think it's unwise. I don't think it fits the intent of the ordinance or the intent of the neighborhood. So I'm, I'm not going to support this. I think it needs to be somewhere else unless he wants to break it down every day and move. If he wants to break it down every day and move, then it perfectly fits the ordinance. Otherwise, I think we're essentially establishing a commercial land use in the middle of this zone with no kind of shielding or buffering. So that, that's my feeling. That, that is the problem that I have with this. I know that he is a good vendor. He's a good businessman. He's very reputable and I wish him luck and if we could find a different place, whether it's Chinook Pier or somewhere else, which would not be embedded in a neighborhood, then I think that I'd be very happy with that. But in these circumstances, I'm not.
But I guess I'd, I would just, you know, if he was breaking down every day and moving out of there and coming back daily, or whether he's there every day uh, permanently for the summer, I, I think you're probably gonna see probably a lot of similarities as far as, you know, the intensity of the use. I, I do think you make some good points on, you know, we can, um, I know, I know other communities have looked at whether or not, um, uh, you know, with these site plans, there are some proposals related to some buffering and, um, you know, appropriateness for the neighborhood, especially if, uh, these, you know, permanent food vendors would be operating on, on private property, because then you're getting into some, uh, you know, crossing over into some zoning uses if they're gonna be there on a permanent basis, so. Um, you know, I'm fine with, you know, maybe we take a look at that, that piece of it, um, and some, and some updates to our ordinance, but, um, at this point, I, I don't see if he's moving daily and bringing his trailer right back to the same location, um, you know, and, and, and he's there all day as it is, that if he's essentially there overnight, if that's really gonna look a whole lot different.
Well, you know, we are subject, subject to our own zoning ordinance, so whether it's on public property or private property is pretty irrelevant. So if this were in somebody's driveway, it would have the same impact on the neighborhood and it wouldn't be allowed. But because it's, uh, DNR property, under, under our control, it looks different in the sense that it's, but it's not in the street right of way. Pat asked me one time at one point, well, suppose it was an ice cream truck. So while he's driving around playing his music, it would be just fine. But if he sets up in one spot all the time, then that's, that doesn't fit either. So I think that because, because we are subject to our zoning, we ought to have the same respect as if it were um, any other property. So I'm not really seeing the distinction on the public property versus private. I'm looking at it more in terms of how does it fit this neighborhood to be there all the time?
And I agree, you know, I think, I think you're right, Bob, that, um, it doesn't fit the neighborhood, and I think it does fit the neighborhood. There's very, there's a couple houses there, but I don't, I don't see a noise problem with there, you know, I don't know what, what the noise problem would be. I, I just don't see, you know, and this is a place that we designated that they could go all day long. All we're doing is saying, look, you can stay out, stay there all night, and I don't and, and, and if it's gonna bother the neighborhood, it would bother the neighborhood in the daytime, not at night. Nobody's gonna be there. So I, I guess I don't, I don't, uh, I don't have a problem with it, to tell you the truth.
I've researched some of the ordinances and stuff like Bob has mentioned, and, and have come to the same conclusion that he's come to, that it really doesn't fit there for overnight. Uh, I've also received correspondence from several neighbors, uh, in that area who are not in favor of having it there overnight. I don't recall seeing any hours of operation listed on this, so there's really nothing to say. He couldn't be open till ten o'clock at night if he really didn't want to. Um, I mean, if that was to be part of a, a consideration that, you know, we limited his hours so that it wasn't a uh, a nuisance to the neighborhood, um, that might be acceptable to me, but we're, we're still subject to what the ordinance reads.
I think the ordinance does have language that limits the hours. If I remember correctly.
There is, but I know that if he is allowed to be there overnight, he will be asking to extend those hours.
Do we have any other, uh, do we have any other locations that we allow overnight? I don't think we've done that before, have we?
Hold on just a second.
We, we have, uh, in the, uh, YMCA parking lot, I think those folks left their, uh, trailer down there, the Voyage Juice Company.
Yes.
Um, I think they've left that there overnight, so there is some precedent there. Um, I can punch uh, the applicant up on the phone. Dave gave me his phone number and said I could give him a call. Would you like him to be listening in and answering any questions?
If he were in the audience, I would ask him to get up and speak.
Okay, I'll get that done. I'll let you know when I've got him on.
Okay.
The second thing that I have is I am concerned, um, somewhat about the loss of parking spaces. As Ryan mentioned, uh, he's talking about four plus possibly two others. Um, so we're, you know, you're looking at losing six parking spaces out of a very limited number ones, of ones that are there.
Well, plus he's gonna have a demand out space, this is for people who are his customers. That would be extra demand that the lot wouldn't normally see.
The computer, if you wanna turn down your other volume.
I don't know how busy the lot is on a normal summer day, but these aren't normal times with the water being so high.
So I'm gonna put you in, you know, you can, uh,
There's fishermen, they're fishing out there and they don't want to fish there this year just because the water is so high and they said, uh, the end of the pier is awful, it's awful slippery, you know, so I don't know, you know.
I wouldn't go out there.
I'm with you. So I, I don't think he's, I, I don't really see a long lines of, of, of customers going from there, but who knows, you know, I mean, it could be, I guess, but I, I just kind of doubt it. But, you know, to, to me, I just don't see the, the the big deal about it really, but I, I, I can see about the limit of the hours. I, I, I put, put limit the hours there, but um, and I thought, I thought he, uh, he talked to me about the hours, but I don't, I guess I didn't, I didn't write them down, so.
I've got Dave on the phone now, uh, and I, I did talk to him about the hours and if you think about it practically speaking, he'd probably like to serve, he's looking at serving Mexican food and he'd probably like to serve, uh, just during daylight hours. Uh, so obviously in the peak of the summer, uh, you know, in late June, uh, that would go, you know, past nine o'clock probably. Uh, but I don't know if he wanted to serve after dark. Dave, uh, can you hear me okay?
Oh, yes, I can. Yes, sir.
Can you guys hear Dave?
Just a little bit.
I'll fix that. There you go.
Okay.
So Dave, were you, uh, thinking about, what, what hours were you thinking about operating out there?
Well, initially we were thinking about being open like from around eleven o'clock in the morning until probably seven, eight o'clock PM initially, but as summer rolls on in July and August later until possibly sundown.
So that'd be like nine, nine-thirty?
So. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not hearing you.
You said like nine or nine-thirty?
Yes, possibly. Uh, yes.
And, uh, there's been some discussion here, Dave, about the possible option of setting up at Chinook Pier. Uh, you, you are looking at having only one trailer this summer. Uh, if we were able to make Chinook Pier work, would that be preferred for you?
Uh, I'd like to know the particulars, but yes, I'm definitely interested in that.
Now, I, I had some discussion with Bob over the weekend, I believe Mike, to Mike Dora. Um, just about the idea that the zoning ordinance and the, uh, you know, fixed, same transient merchant ordinance appear to, you know, be in disagreement with one another here. Since the, uh, ordinance was initially adopted, I believe in two thousand and two, Linda has told me that we've never once gotten an application, uh, for this location.
Actually, that, that ordinance was adopted earlier than that. It was just updated in two thousand and two.
Do you know when it was adopted?
No, but I've been working for the city for thirty years and it's been on the books since then.
Thirty years, you must have been in middle school.
Oh, yeah.
So, uh, yeah, so thirty years plus, never gotten an application for North Shore.
Yes, yeah, okay.
That's probably why we've never had this conversation before.
So if the council were so inclined to approve it tonight, I would recommend you do, uh, set, you know, not so much early, cause nobody's, I don't wanna say nobody, but I don't know that, uh, Dave is gonna be out there at, at seven AM or has any interest in being out there that early. You know, we're talking about in the evening, perhaps setting a, a time at which you'd be comfortable letting him stay open until, uh, letting him leave his stand there overnight. And I would want to introduce, you know, the, the location on the asphalt was, I know Derek's out there. Um, Derek and Matt had gone out and looked at it and just felt like it was a, a better cleaner setup to let him set up on the asphalt. Um, if you go off to the side of the parking lot along a, a driveway that runs off the parking lot, seems like there could be a spot on the, uh, on the dirt just off the parking lot that wouldn't take up any parking spots, but would, uh, let him serve people that are standing on the asphalt. And that way you wouldn't lose any parking spots, so that, that's a possibility. And he would still have the same proximity to the power and, uh, is it water or sewer, Derek? Water, right?
Yeah, it's water.
Then you'd be on sand?
Right.
So all of this has to be, is subject to DNR approval?
Correct.
Like I said, the DNR is happy enough to have these trucks at the state park, so don't know if they have an issue.
I did make the request, but I've not heard back from the, uh, DNR yet.
Like I said, my concern is still that, uh, we're introducing this commercial use into a completely unscreened, un- uh, unbuffered area in a residential neighborhood. But to me, that's, uh, any, most other places where this has come up, we have had some reasonable separation between the point where a truck is placed and the, uh, and the, uh, neighboring ho- homes. This is kind of different. Not sure if that was ever thought about when, when the, uh, permanent location vendor was set up. And maybe nobody ever anticipated that it would be an overnight situation where they would be there on constant presence.
Would you like me to show you a, a drawing? I mean, Linda, is that drawing in your office that Dave dropped off?
Of the trailer?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in my office.
Is there any interest in seeing what it's gonna look like?
Um. I don't.
I think we got some, didn't we?
Well, you got some things in the packet and I just remind anybody that's watching from home that they can open up the packet at, uh, grandhaven.org. Scroll to the bottom of the page under agendas and you can see exactly what the city council's discussing here. There's some drawings. Uh, but, uh, Dave dropped off a more vivid rendering, uh, for Linda, if you'd like me to go grab that.
I, I don't need to see it.
I don't need to see it either, but, um, uh, seeing the wet to water level that it is now and that, and worrying about how many fishermen and how packed that parking lot's gonna be, I think that's kind of a mute right now, to be honest with you. I, I'm having, I'm siding with Danny and Ryan a little bit here because I don't think it, that is gonna be that much of a factor. Time, maybe, uh, a time factor might be better off for us, you know, have set hours. But I, this year alone, it's, it's a one-year thing. It's yearly, so it's not continuous forever. And I think with the conditions of the, uh, we have going on in this world today, I I'm willing to move forward with it.
Yeah, and I think, I think we do need to limit the hours, though. I, I, I don't have a problem with the hours at eight o'clock. That's, you know, I think that's what the ordinance says anyways, and I guess I don't have a problem doing that, but, but, you know, if we're gonna make him break, take it home, you know, um, every night, the way, the way he explained it to me, that the health department wasn't gonna okay that, so I, I mean, so, so, you know, like Mike said, it's gonna be a one-year deal. I mean, we've, we've done a lot of things, just one year to try it out to see if it works or not. And I think this is one we can, we can, we can do without a problem, so I don't have a problem with it.
Other comments? Are we ready to vote?
Hey Mike, do you wanna turn your, uh,
Linda, can you call the roll?
Or your audio up on the other thing?
Dora?
Okay.
Cummins?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
Minnetza?
No.
Motion passed. I'm gonna cut you loose. We'll talk.
May I ask, did you, um, limit the hours? Was that decided or not?
Well, it didn't make it part of the motion, but I think the, the point that was made was that that was in the ordinance.
And the ordinance, I think, is, um, seven o'clock or sundown, whichever is earlier.
Well, no, no provision was made to change the hours from the ordinance, so I believe that's what we'll control.
Okay, so if he wants to change the hours, you have to come back and request that?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, are we done? Okay, let's move on to our next item.
Next item to approve a request for an encroachment permit for parking located at one-one-one-two South Harbor Drive.
Is there a motion?
So moved. So moved.
Yeah, moved by Cummins. Silence by everyone else.
I didn't even have a second for discussion.
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, thank you. Motion by Cummins, second by Dora. All right, then let's discuss.
I guess I'll go first, since I seconded it for discussion.
You're on.
Um, I've been down to the area, looked it over, um, not really in favor of creating, uh, substandard parking, uh, parking spaces, uh, especially in a busy area with lots of sidewalk traffic like this area is going to have. Uh, the second thing that I have for that is, um, our short-term rental parking ordinance strictly states that all parking must be on the property. This would allow for parking to not be on the property, uh, which in case would open up, um, probably many other places that are currently short-term rentals, uh, whose, uh, have been reduced for capacities because they don't have parking, uh, to apply for parking variances to park in the street or city lots or any number of places in order to meet the requirements so they could have a, a full, uh, occupancy. I know that, uh, several folks, as I had mentioned, Du- uh, Dwayne and Heather Bloomers for one, uh, theirs was reduced. Uh, they had occupancy of fourteen, but actually only had parking for twelve. Uh, so as part of the, um, stuff that we came up with on the planning commission, we limited them because they did not have parking. So I would not be in favor of opening this up in, in that instance.
I have to agree with you, Mike. Um, I think, didn't we, didn't we have something like this occur on Emmett Street? If I remember correctly, and we turned them down on it also, so I'm not in favor of, of it either, so I'm definitely gonna be voting no on this.
Uh, I, for me, the, the staff report notes that, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
The staff report notes that, you know, family members and guests have parked two vehicles in the driveway for years, you know, not knowing that a majority of the driveway is located in the city right of way and um, you know, they're seeking approval of an encroachment permit to legally continue the use of the driveway. Uh, for private off-street parking, regardless of whether or not the short-term rental piece is approved, you know, that, that's up to the planning commission to take a look at, whether or not it's appropriate for compact cars and whether or not it's really, uh, appropriate to use as a, you know, short-term rental and whether or not they have the parking standards met. Um, it, so I, you know, for me, I, I don't, you know, we don't approve the, uh, the encroachment. Are they even still able to use this driveway? Um, would be a concern that I would have. I, I, I don't, I'm supportive of approving it overall. Uh, it, it brings their long-term practice of using this driveway and, um, encroachment into compliance. Um, and I think we let the planning commission sort out the short-term rental piece and what's appropriate, not appropriate in that regard.
Okay, I, I'm not a, I'm not in favor of this either and be, and, and some other reasons, but, um, when you, um, you know, when you have a parking lot, when, when you, you know, you put lines at parking lot, they're eighteen foot long, and this, this is seventeen and a half. So by a legal parking spot, it would be, it would be six inches into the, into the sidewalk. And, um, that usually wouldn't be a problem, but if you have a pickup truck, it's extended cab, you gotta hitch on there. That hitch is gonna be in the sidewalk area. To allow this to happen, we could be liable for something. I, I just, I just don't even wanna get in there. I, I think, I think, uh, I, I, I could not approve, um, something that might, uh, that, 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 that this car could, could. something that might, uh, that, 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 that this car could, could, um, stick out into the sidewalk area. So, um, yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not going to vote for this.
Well, a couple of things I'll address. One is, uh, Ryan, you bring up a point about, uh, continued use of their driveway for parking. Uh, people park in the right of way for on-street parking all the time. In fact, right at the moment, my priest has parked out in front of the house on the curb. I don't need a license agreement for that. I can continue doing that. I don't happen to have exclusive use of it, but nobody else is going to park in front of their garage just because. So I don't think that that ability to use it for personal private parking is going to be lost. And I don't think it requires a license agreement to support it. I'm not concerned about taking something away that they've enjoyed all these years. I do concern myself with supporting a, um, a short-term rental capacity. By granting license over city property, that's something we haven't done, something we've res- resisted doing. And as was noted, there's other instances where this could have been done and wasn't. I don't want to start doing that. Um, I did note in a memo that Jennifer, uh, Howland wrote. She spoke of as artificially suppressing the capacity of the short-term rental, which I thought was, um, a little disingenuous because every condition you put on in zoning artificially suppresses the use of a property. That's what zoning does. So using one of the conditions of the zoning ordinance to determine the capacity of the short-term rental seems perfectly reasonable to me. So regardless of whether or not she would otherwise have capacity, the fact that they're using, they want to use the vast majority of those two spaces that land areas in the city right of way. I would not agree to that for, just because we have resisted doing so up till now. And I don't see any reason to start. And I know that we would have other people who have been denied. So I'm not in favor of doing that and not in favor of them losing the ability to private park personally there. And even if they, um, even if they rented as a short-term rental on a reduced capacity, they would have on-street parking. They just wouldn't be able to count that parking toward their capacity. So I hope that kind of long-winded, I hope that makes sense, but that's how I felt about this since I first looked at it. I have been down there and I've looked at it. And I think that, uh, you know, these are substandard spaces. If they are granted as spaces, nobody's going to guarantee the compact, compact cars are going to be in there. But it would be using the, it would be leveraging the city right of way to support the capacity of their short-term rental. So that piece of it, I will support them using it privately as on-street parking. Don't have any issue with that. That's what they've been doing a long. So that, that's how I feel about this one. Yeah, we've been, we've been allowing them to park as a good example. My parents' house on Sixth Street. My parents parked in the right of way for ever since, uh, 1954, I think is when he had his car. So they've always been parking there, especially down in the, the north end here. We've had a lot of people that park there. We, we don't, it's not a short-term. When it comes to short-term rental, they have to have this space of their own. They, they can't be using ours. I have to agree with you a hundred percent, Bob. Other thoughts, comments?
If it was a long-term rental, they would still be able to use those spots.
If it was a long-term rental, I don't think they could use those spots to support the capacity of their rental. But they could use them as on-street parking.
Right. So.
But, you know, on-street parking doesn't counter the short-term rental.
You know, the, the ordinance for short-term rental parking specifically states it must be on the property. If the, if the problem is with the ordinance, then we should look that up and, and redo it. But if it's not a problem, then we should follow what the ordinance says. That's why we have them.
Well, I agree. I, but I think that's what the planning commission has to look at in determining whether or not to issue a special land use for the, the short-term rental that. We're simply looking at the encroachment piece for parking that in and of itself, uh, not for the use that they may use it for.
Uh, the planning commission doesn't have the ability to grant the license. So that's, that's on us.
We're not granting it specific for a short-term rental purpose. It wouldn't be. And I don't think they're asking for it just for that. I mean, I, I think it sounded like from their requests, they were asking for it in general, regardless of whether or not they are granted a short-term rental approval or not.
But I don't think they would need it for any other purpose. Yeah. Are you saying something or you're shuffling papers?
Shuffling papers.
Shuffling. Sorry.
All right. We saw you muted yourself. Any other discussion?
Done.
All right. Linda, can you call the roll?
Cummins?
Uh, yes.
Scott?
No.
Fritz?
No.
Nora?
No.
Minnetza?
No.
All right. Next item.
Next item is to approve the placement of a millage request of point two-five mils or, uh, 25 cents per $1,000 of taxable value. The Northwest Ottawa Recreation Authority on the August 4th, 2020 primary ballot. Nora and the administration recommend approval.
Do we have a motion? So moved.
Hey Bob?
Yes.
Uh, I just want to check and make sure on this. Um, a- as most of you probably know, my wife does work for Nora. And I just want to make sure that this isn't an issue for me to participate in this and, and vote. Uh, if other council members are okay with it, then I, I'll go ahead, but if not, I'll sit it out.
All right. Do you feel that, uh, you will financially gain or that your, your judgment will be, um, encumbered by, by this, um, potential conflict of interest?
Um, judgment, no. Financially gain, I'm not sure. My wife would get a paycheck.
Well, does she get anyone now?
Yes.
Okay. Let me, uh, put it to the council members. Does anyone have an issue with Mr. Dora participating in both the discussion and the vote? Can I all speak at once?
I don't have concern with that.
Okay.
I, I don't have a concern either.
Dennis?
I know.
Okay. Neither do I. So, uh, Linda, as a point of order, do we need to vote on that or are you satisfied with this consensus?
I'm satisfied with the consensus. I can put it in the minutes too, that there was a consensus. There wasn't a conflict of interest.
All right. Let's do that. Let's move on then. Uh, so we have a, we had a motion, I believe by Ryan. And no one seconded yet.
Seconded.
Okay. Mr. Dora seconded. Okay. Now, Mr. Van. Okay, where, where, where Mr. Van?
I'm here.
Well, there you are. I see you.
There. All right.
You turned into a picture. I was looking for the name.
Oh.
Is there a presentation?
Uh, yeah, I think Pat's going to pull it up. Here it is. Yep. Everyone hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Uh, so this is a, a PowerPoint presentation I put together for the board, uh, the Nora board, uh, last November. As we were starting to investigate, uh, a millage, what's a millage options would look like. So this is just, just some information, uh, pertaining to that meeting, which hopefully will explain purpose of the millage. Uh, this is, uh, our participation numbers, uh, based on our last fiscal year. Our, our fiscal year runs, uh, July 1 through June 30th. So this is the 18, 19. Um, you can see what our numbers were. We're slightly over 7,000 participants, um, across all of our municipalities. This, these are the different options, um, that you would see for a potential millage. Um, the top number, if you just focus on the city of Grand Haven, the 90,005, 42 number would be a point one-five number. Or I'm sorry, a point one-five millage. The second number of 120,000 would be point two, and then 150 would be point two-five. Um, the point two-five millage was the one that the board voted on, um, to try to proceed with at this point. So for the city of Grand Haven, it'd be 150,904. Uh, currently the city of Grand Haven pays an allocation fee of just under $34,000 to Nora.
They keep going, huh?
Yep. Uh, this is just a, a graph, uh, showing where our allocation is. So 119,182, that's the four participating municipalities right now. Um, so that's Robinson Township, Fair, uh, City of Fairiesburg, Grand Haven Township, and obviously City of, of Grand Haven. Then you could see what a combined millage would look like, um, on the far right there with the point two-five, uh, of 472, 472,661. You can go ahead, Pat, unless somebody has questions. Um, this is just a revenue comparison. Uh, right now, uh, we get 119,182 from our municipalities. We have 168,000 in programming fees, about 50,000 in team fees. Uh, we do receive a $31,000, uh, grant from the United Way once a year. That grant is specifically used for our rec summer school program, which has three different, uh, locations, uh, throughout the tri-cities area. One at Ferry Elementary School, one at River Haven Mobile Home Park, and the others at Lake Hills Elementary School in Fairiesburg. So that, the, that 31,412 is specifically used for that program. Um, and then obviously there's other, other fees in there, uh, revenue sources from player fees, open gym, such as adult, uh, basketball, pickleball, open volleyball, um, donations, and then scholarships of 4,000. So currently our revenue is at, uh, just under 400,000. Uh, this millage would put us up, uh, at five, I'm sorry, 591,000, uh, for total revenue. So Pat, if you want to go to the next, this is an expense comparison again, current to, to what a, a millage would be with a point two-five. Um, wages and benefits, a millage would allow me to, allow us, I should say, to hire a couple more, uh, staff members, another full-time, uh, programming coordinator. We have one currently. We have three full-time employees, um, myself. We have a programming coordinator and we have a rec assistant, um, in the office. And so this would allow us to hire another full-time employee, uh, and also a part-time employee as well. Um, contracted services, those deal mostly with, uh, coaches and, and other outside vendors that we contract with to come in and do special classes. Have a little bit more expertise and things. Um, also our attorney fees, uh, are located in there and also some transportation costs, which are associated with recreation summer school. Um, yep. And then this is just a, a budget analysis, total revenue to expenses. Showing the revenue coming in and the expenses that'd be going out. Go to the next slide. Um, so this is kind of where we get into the explanation. This is how it would impact our communities. Um, the allocation right now would be removed. If we did pass a millage, obviously the allocation expense would be removed to the municipalities. Um, this is probably the biggest feature. A registration for our programs would be reduced, um, you know, right around 50% for all of our classes. So right now, an average six-week class at Nora costs a family about $45. That cost would come down, um, you know, right around to about 22, 50 to $25 a class. So that would be a huge savings to a lot of our families. Um, it would also allow us to bring our adult class, programming classes down. We have like our, our summer softball runs about $525 for a team. Uh, we'd be able to bring that price point down closer to about 350, 375 dollars for them as well. So, um, we could expand our rec summer school. Our rec summer school right now, we, um, we have at three different sites. And we could expand that out to another site. We wouldn't be reliant as much on that United Way grant money. Um, we're working also with our, our local municipalities, utilizing more grants, um, to, uh, get more funding for our parks, uh, for more programs there. We'd be able to help with updating equipment, additional field services. Um, and probably one of the biggest features is we'd be able to open up an outdoor recreational, uh, class schedule. According to our five-year rec studies, we just recently had one. Uh, people in our community, especially in the Grand Haven, city of Grand Haven, they want more walking classes, hiking classes, kayaking classes, things of that nature. Um, I, we would be, we would have the ability to hire someone who, uh, works in that area that could, uh, help us coordinate these classes for, uh, our community residents. So, um, it would, it would basically be able to allow us to bring our price point way down. Um, and also open up more classes for, um, uh, class, classes and programs that the community is looking to, looking for right now. And another area, Pat, if you want to flip the screen to the next one. So yeah, I just kind of touched on the outdoor recreation division, hiking and walking, kayaking, yoga, ecology, mountain biking, fishing. Um, another area that we're, we're already starting to branch out in a little bit, but we would continue to is more in the community education style classes that have probably gone away in the last 15 years. Um, we are, we currently have a cooking class right now for our, for our youth, for our elementary students with artisan. It's going very well. We get 10 to 12 kids for every class. Um, but also looking at implementing auto repair, welding, CAD drawing and first aid classes, um, should a millage pass. Um, we also have a new relationship with the Arts Academy in Fairiesburg, uh, for new drawing classes, drama classes and dance classes. Uh, we are starting to work with the YMCA and cooperative programs. I know that hasn't always happened in the past between the two entities. Um, Greg Coyle, the executive there, and I have a very good relationship. We work really hard at bringing our two, um, businesses together. And we, uh, we're hoping, um, at this point, we have a spring track meet, uh, coming up on May, in, uh, the first week of May at White Pines. It's a free event. It's, uh, what used to be the Hershey Track Meet. Uh, but the Y and Nora, uh, are, are, uh, working on that together. We're going to be joining together to put that event on for our community. And we're really excited about that. We're obviously hoping at this point that we can actually have that. Um, and then also we would look at hosting as an organization, annual events in each municipality, such as, uh, walking and running events, dog days in the park and triathlon events. I think that's it. Oh, this is next step. Um, they did decide on it, on a, on a millage amount of point two-five. Um, obviously everything's at, uh, the municipal level at this point. Um, our, our deadline, uh, is May, I believe it's actually May 5th, not May 12th, uh, but we're looking to be on the August 4 primary. Uh, Fairiesburg did pass this, um, uh, proposal a few weeks ago. Uh, Grand Haven Township, I believe, is, uh, voting on it this evening. And, uh, Robinson Township will be, uh, taking action on it on Thursday evening. Questions?
Chris, I want to applaud you. Chris, I want to applaud you on at least coming forward with some type of operational. This is for operational millage, right?
Yes, just, yep. Strictly operation.
Coming in with such a good plan. You know, I, I've been involved with Nora for like 13 years. I was on the board there and I've been trying to get things moving. I'm happy to see you guys moving forward with this and, uh, also getting it out of our general fund and becoming, you know, more independent of your own like that, being able to do it is a great, great, great way to go. Um, getting all of us on the same page and offering more and, uh, making sure that our constituents that are strapping for money nowadays is, you can come down with a lower price on it and getting people more active and being more into the recreation, you know, is a good plus thing. So I'm really hyped up on this. I think you did a fantastic job on it. It's, uh,
Thank you.
It, it's a very good way to go. Now you can be, uh, maybe move into something a little bit bigger space, you know?
Yes.
You'll have some money to operate with that, to do that, because where you are, you, is just, I don't know how you handle it. I don't know how. I don't know how, listen, know all them guys handle it for all these years. It was just cramped quarters, being there and having to be in with, with the school and that. So I got to say thank you for all you guys' hard work, everybody on the board, everybody that put this in, in on this. So it's one of my dreams to come true. I just got to keep going forward. I just want recreation for all and the whole community come together. So it's a good, good start. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I have to agree with, uh, what Mike said. Uh, I attend a lot of the meetings as, as Chris knows, Ryan knows, uh, seems, you know, he's the liaison. The programs that they offer, uh, adult and kids for after school are just uncomparable. Gives the kids something to do and it keeps them out of trouble for a little while, uh, which some of them need some help doing. Uh, the rec summer school, uh, is a great opportunity. Uh, it's very, very largely attended. I, I see the groups of kids walking, uh, over to the Salvation Army and back, uh, sometimes on my way home from lunch and they're just, they all have a great time. Uh, I think it's a, a great opportunity. It helps lower. I think it's a, a great opportunity. It helps lower costs for residents who want to participate, uh, in, in all of these communities, uh, which as Mike said, it is, uh, going to be a help for them with the upcoming, you know, harder times. We all are, seem to be faithful. Um, I really like the collaboration, uh, efforts that Chris has gone through, uh, to get, uh, the Y on board and, and some of the other, uh, people that he's been talking to. So I, I'm in favor of this, and I think it's a great step forward. Great job.
I agree. I think, uh, I think you did a great job with this. The presentation was great. And, um, you know, and, and we're not approving the millage. All we're doing is saying, we're giving the chance to the voters to approve this. So, and I think they need a chance to do that.
Right, thank you.
And, and, um, we all need to be able to participate in this, and, and one way to do that is to vote for this millage and, and get it to get approved. I hope, I hope it does approve, but, but, um, all we're doing right now tonight is, is giving you the authorization to put it on the, um, put it on the, um, where, where people can vote for it. So yeah, I, I'm all for it. I think, um, people need, need a chance to vote for this. Um, our kids are a very important asset to us and, uh, and, um, your program is a great program.
Thank you.
I'm all for it. Thank you.
Yeah, I think what we've seen with, uh, uh, this recent COVID-nineteen emergency and social distancing, I think we've seen even more of the importance of recreation and, and having those kind of opportunities available. Uh, and, you know, the Nora Board really looked at a variety of funding levels, as you saw, the kind of three levels that they looked at, and, and, um, really felt that that point two-five mills was best for that expanded, you know, programming and ongoing support, really strengthening the current programs that are there. And I just want to hit on again, you know, uh, for folks that, that, you know, right now we're supporting Nora through our, our general fund expend, expenditures, and that, you know, should this, uh, millage pass, that the funding from our general fund would actually be replaced by, uh, those millage dollars. So, um, I think it's an important piece to point out, along with, you know,, um, reduced program costs for folks, and then the expanded opportunities, um, uh, and, and strengthening the programs that can come from this. I think it's a good opportunity. Um, and I'm looking forward to, uh, more discussion on it in the coming months and, uh, more education, uh, of the public and, and, uh, hopefully, uh, getting their, uh, support for it, uh, on the, uh, the ballot in August.
Thank you. And I agree with everything that's been said. I think that the important point here is that the decision will be the voter's decision. You've made your case to us tonight. You'll make your case to the voters as time goes on. That's how it should be. I think that we should note that, and I think a couple of you have already noted, that we're currently fun, we're currently supporting through general fund, uh, millage. Some of that would be replaced by this. So I would assume that, I don't know at what level, I assume at some level, we would need less millage from general fund and more goes into this. So I think there's a trade-off to be made there as well. So I think that that would be an additional selling point on this. Uh, stabilizing the income for Nora is also a big deal. And as, as you've noted, and as Ryan just made a point, especially now in the circumstances we're in, having the opportunity for outdoor recreation, for being, being active is, is more important than ever and only becomes more so. So I think that this is a good thing to put on the ballot. I think it's a good thing to let the voters make a decision on it. Appreciate all the hard work you've got, you've done to get to this point.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions? I believe we're pretty ready to vote.
Pat?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Dora?
Yes.
Cummins?
Yes.
Manetta?
Yes.
All right, next item.
Next item is to approve a twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one millage request of point-six mills, uh, authorization from the Harbor Transit Multimodal Transportation System pursuant to Article eight of their bylaws. The Harbor Transit Multimodal Transportation System recommends approval.
We have motion.
So moved.
Second.
Hey, motion by Scott, second by Cummins. So let's talk about this one. Um, Pat, do you want to speak to this first?
I, I'm just put, putting it on the agenda. It was recommended by the board. It's consistent with our past years of participation with the, uh, transit system. And I'll just note that you do have a full-mill authorization, uh, so this is well beneath what your authorization to levy is on this item.
All right. And I also serve on the Harbor Transit, uh, board. Pat and I are the city's representatives on this board. Uh, the board is composed of eleven members, two from each of the five participating municipalities, and one at large person. And that, I don't know, at the January twenty-second meeting, the board did vote, uh, recommend the point-six mills to each municipality. That says he didn't get the request for the, to put it on our agenda until late February. I don't know why that's the case, but it certainly is no surprise that it was coming because both of us were there and voted for it. So, uh, here it is. We're a little late getting to it for various reasons. But, um, this is our, our share, and everybody has an equal millage level, uh, for supporting the Harbor Transit system. In the comments.
Pat, was, is there some reasoning why that was provided by the, uh, the Harbor Transit Board for terminating the administrative services with the city?
To, to them, it was a matter of cost. They figured that they could get a better deal elsewhere.
Yeah, it does. That was the, um, seemed to be the rationale. It was a split vote, uh, to, to do that. You know, the, uh, perspective that I had was that the, um, value of having the city do those services was, uh, far greater than what they were paying for it. They're, uh, still looking to, to get a number for what it's going to cost them to have others do it. Uh, but certainly, um, you know, my mind's not been changed. I, I think they're going to pay far more in the long run. It's already a, a significant lopsided amount. They're paying for administration compared to what we used to pay when it was a city department. As a percentage of the overall budget, their administrative expenses are now far higher than they used to be. Um, but that's not really part of this request. They're asking to, uh, you know, if we want to continue participating and paying our six-tenths of a mill. And, uh, you know, I'll continue. As I, I'm, I'm appointed to the board as well. I serve as the secretary, and I'll continue to work to get the best, most efficient operation we can have. And I, I really do think that was, that was already had with the city doing the administration, because we do it overall for a much larger group. You know, we're hel- helping out with the sewer fund and, and the, the water system and the county dispatch and our own operations. So doing this Nora, you know, we've taken on Nora recently, uh, because you spread that overhead out among many units, rather than hiring all that overhead over there, I think was very, very wasteful, but it is what the board decided to do.
Okay. You know, I'm, I'm certainly fine with this going forward, you know, uh, for, for voters to decide, um, you know, but I, I'm really hoping to see some, you know, more concrete plans and commitments for, you know, some connected services to other communities, uh, especially Muskegon and Holland, um, Grand Rapids. You know, we have a lot of folks, you know, working here who reside in those other communities and, um, or folks that live here and would like to visit other communities and, and better, you know, connected transportation system is definitely needed. Um, I think we definitely could benefit from better promotion and advertising of the Beach Express options, options, uh, that are out there to help with some of our parking issues and then, uh, you know, hopefully some improved, uh, efficiencies. There's a lot of large buses, uh, you know, going around with, uh, very few people on them. Um, I'm not sure what kind of smaller vehicle options or those sorts of things can be looked at. Certainly, I'm sure there, there are some of those things, but, but, uh, but yeah, I'm, I'm okay with this going forward to the voters.
Uh, Ryan, Ryan, this is not going to the voters. This is something, this is something we budget. We already have our one mill of allocation for transportation.
So this isn't, this isn't a renewal that they, that I, okay, I misunderstood.
We have to make a commitment to Harbor Transit annually. Uh, based on, based on the agreement between the municipalities as to what level we're going to fund them at. So no, this is not a ballot thing.
Okay, my misunderstanding there.
This is our decision.
Okay. Um, well, I guess my, I'm fine with this funding level with some of those things, with what I just indicated being looked at and some commitments. Um, and I guess we'll see where things stand a year from now, but.
I have, I have to agree with you, Ryan. Uh, I've been trying for years, and Pat, you can attest to that. Since I've been on council, I've been wanting to connect our outside areas to us, to Muskegon, Holland, Grand Rapids. I've been a very advocate person of pushing it, and it doesn't seem to fall in deaf ears over there. So hopefully, if we keep tooting our horn a little bit, telling them that we want them to, and I know Bob and Pat have been working very hard to push that for us. So I have to agree on that. We really need to reach out. And what I've seen lately, really disturbs me the most, is that I'm looking at these new vehicles they got. These big Fords are twice the size of the Chevys were, and you're absolutely correct. One or two people on there, you're driving around all that. I'm sure that those Fords do not go very far on fuel. I know what my motorhome gets, and I guarantee you, it's not going to be anywhere, they're not getting that well. And if you're only going to have such a low ridership, they should be looking at more compact and be, and being ready for it, because I don't think those large machines can actually be maintained for a long time at the rate they're going to trying to feed them. I'm saying with the money wise, to keep feeding them fuel to them. We need to be more efficient, I think.
I agree with, uh, expanding the area. Uh, that sounds like a great idea to me. Uh, the service that they offer is important. Uh, we have a lot of, uh, assisted living places around town and elderly folks who, who use it quite a bit to get to the grocery stores or their doctor's appointments. So I, I, for one, would not want to see the service go away. I think it's, it's just a great opportunity for those who are, are shut in or can no longer drive to be able to get around and enjoy town. So I, I'm in favor of it. Um, as far as the, the Ford versus Chevy fuel economy, I'm sure the Ford's way better.
Well, I'm not talking about cars having fuel economy. I'm talking about the size of the vehicle. Even the Chevy ones are using our fuel at gas pogs. They're just so big for our area. We're not, this is not a, a transit like we have in Grand Rapids. This is Grand Haven. And I have to agree with Ryan. You only see one or two people on it. When you have those massive vehicles, it doesn't give a good persona to anybody out there when you look at them.
No, it would be nicer if they had some, something smaller, but a- at some point in time, I'm sure the, the, uh, amount of people riding is probably going to go back up again, um, once we get past the, these trying times, and we will get past them. And folks will get out and moving around again, and, and I'm sure their, you know, their riders will go up.
I, I agree with both of you. I, I think, uh, I think, uh, those vehicles are awful big, and I think they're awful, awful going to, going to be fuel logs. There's no doubt about it. Um, and, and I don't, I don't see the purpose of those big ones either, but I guess we're not on the board, so we don't get to vote. But that, 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 that's Bob's privilege to take care of that problem, so, um, I guess we could all, all, all we're doing is, is asking for the, for the millage to, uh, go ahead and, uh, keep the service going here, and I, I'm, I'm for keeping the service. I, I, I agree with, I, I agree with expanding, uh, our distance. I think we gotta go, go to Muskegon and Holland and, and maybe someday connect with Grand Rapids, but, but for right now, I think the, the, the thing is that they're asking us to do is prove the six mills and, uh, and let the service continue for Grand Haven citizens, and I'm all for that. I think it's a, a, a great use, and I think it's, it, our, our citizens use it a lot, so, especially our elderly and, uh, and, and the younger people. So I, I'm for keeping the service, and, and, and to do that, we have to go ahead and vote for the six mills, so I'm okay with that.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, and, and anyways, um, so, so, but, but I do question the big vehicles too. I just, I don't see much of a need for those, so. But that's not our decision either, so it's, it's our decision to either keep the service going or, uh, or discontinue it. And I'm, I'm all for keeping the service, so I'm okay with the six mills.
Certainly, you know, I, yeah, I'd support the service continue. I just don't want to see these, uh, dollars going towards higher administrative costs, and maybe it can be used better in other ways, but.
I guess my perspective, are you done, Ryan? I'm sorry.
Yep.
It's easy to butt in on each other here. You gotta get, take a little getting used to. I guess my perspective here is that I've been in the, in the board meetings with Pat, and we shared our frustrations with some of the, uh, some of the thinking on the board, some of the decisions, and we're not agreed with everything. A couple of things I'd point out, Dennis, Danny was absolutely correct when he says the choices between you keep the service or not keep the service. We don't have anything to replace the service with, and the service is well-used and well-received by our constituents, and it's pretty darn reasonable. So it's a demand-response system. It picks you up where you are, and it takes you where you want to go. And it's, it's really good service, and for a really good price for the user. Um, and it has a long history of serving as well. The, uh, situation we're in now, partly it's that we have had, not had a permanent director for some period of time. We're looking for one. So we're looking for, um, a new director for, a new executive director for Harbor Transit. And, uh, I'd like to see that process play itself out. If we have further reservations going forward, rather than let the system suddenly expire on us, say, well, we're not funding it, so go away. That's not a realistic way to do it. You need to plan these things out and say, here's what we're going to do in the future. We've not done that either. So I think that voting for the six-tenths mill, which it used to be, and then dropped to point-five-eight and now it's back to point-six, that's just a matter of keeping the status quo as it is. The, uh, the way the administrative costs are being sorted out, handled, uh, not increasing them, uh, that's some growing pains which probably weren't needed by Harbor Transit, and maybe going forward, we can make other decisions. And maybe if we are truly unhappy with the service, we can do something in the future, but the time is not right for that. I think that the best thing we can do is to approve this and say, you know, we, we have our reservations, but we still like to have the service. We still want to serve our people. So I think that's the situation we're in right now, but I think that this is still a life topic for us. Any other thoughts? Are we ready to vote?
Chris?
Yes.
Dora?
Yes.
Cummins?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Manetta?
Yes.
All right, next item.
Next item is to authorize the city manager to contract with Midwest Construction an amount not to exceed forty-seven thousand dollars to install six commercial aluminum doors, install a new access door, and partition the stairs that lead to the basement, and repair an original window at the Grand Trump Depot building. The administration recommends approval.
We have motion.
So moved.
Second.
I'm sorry, who, who moved?
Dora.
Dora on the second by Cummins, okay. Whatever. Or the other way around. I was waiting for the light to, the box to light up around your faces.
Okay, questions, comments? Pat, would you like to, uh, speak to this for a moment?
Uh, yes, I could. I'd see if there's, oh, there's me. Um,
There you are.
Nope, there's Ashley. Asked her if she wanted to.
Ashley, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to overrule you. Come on in.
Try it.
I got your name on there. I heard your voice.
Yeah, I guess I'll show up eventually.
Well, we can hear you, so, uh, do you want to walk us through that first one?
That is dark in here, but it's that, oh, you know, it was, it was me.
There you are.
Yeah, you just gotta turn the lights on.
Yeah. All right, so, um, this agenda item is kind of in response to, um, uh, was it last week now or two weeks ago, we received no bids for the depot, our portion of the depot work that we agreed to. Um, so we're proposing to move forward with the two contractors for the two separate portions of work, um, the electrical upgrades and the, the Midwest construction, which you're looking at now, um, in order to kind of expedite the process and save some time in our efforts to get these tenants open, ideally in May. So happy to answer any questions, but, um, as you saw in your packet, I don't have it. Oh, it is. Yeah, and not to exceed forty thousand for the, for Midwest construction for, or essentially ordering those doors and building the partition around the staircase, um, for safety and, um, that general contractor work.
Ashley. Sorry about that, Bob. I just wanted to, you think with the, uh, order from the governor today, the contractor will be able to hit the ground tomorrow and get those doors ordered? Or do we know what state they're coming from or anything like that?
I do not. And I haven't heard any word from the contractors as of today. So that'll be some follow-up that will take place tomorrow. And hopefully we'd still be able to order the doors as they have a four-week lead time roughly. Um, as far as physical work, might be a delay.
Okay, thanks.
But at least we'll be, uh, put on the list if they do, and we get the order in for the doors. At least we get on the list and get it coming soon as they start being manufactured. Or whenever the band is left, they can get moving on it al, al pronto. So.
Correct.
It's a good start. Yeah. And in effect, we'll be acting as the general contractor and hiring them to come and do the work, I believe.
Could you repeat that?
What's that?
Could you repeat that?
I said, in effect, um, with this and the next item, the city is going to be acting as a general contractor, hiring contractors to do specific work. Instead of having something bid out and, um, complete as the scope of work and all that. So we're kind of taking that role on for ourselves.
Essentially, yeah. Given the current construction environment, there's no shortage of work as we know. So it's very difficult, given the, the smaller scale scope of this project to get, um, bids in the timeframe we're looking.
That's pretty true.
This project did go up to bid, but you couldn't get any bids, bidders to bid on. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, so you went out and phoned some contractors that, uh, would come in and do the work and give us halfway decent prices. Is that what you're thinking? Is that, that's?
Midwest was one of two contractors that expressed an interest in the project, but did not, um, submit within the bid timeframe. So we reached back out to them and asked for a firm estimate to move forward with and took the lower. And we feel, we feel pretty comfortable with the figures.
Okay, all right. I'm okay with that. Normally I like to see three bids, but I know you couldn't, you couldn't get them this time. So, and we have to do, uh, get this project done so people can move in there for the, this season. So, um, I'm okay with it.
I support moving, uh, forward with it also. Uh, time's starting to run short for the, the folks that want to get in there and get, uh, get going. So, um, Ashley, great job. Appreciate all your efforts on this and getting it rolling and keeping it going.
Thank you for your help.
You know? And I agree. I think that, uh, it's been an uphill battle all the way along and that you've done the best you can with what you got. And as far as when we can get stuff delivered and built and all that, all we can do is, what we can do, which is to, you know, grant our authorization. Now, I asked Pat this earlier and just, just so that it's clear. They phrased this as estimate on their price and we're treating it for our authorization as a not to exceed price. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. We're, we're asking city council for this authority to allow us to spend up to these amounts. Uh, and anything else, you know, there are clear spending guidelines that we have. But these, this helps us keep the, uh, budget cap on. And I, I just also wanted to point out, we're working with local architect Kirsten Runchki is offering us daily advice, along with Todd Brand and Derek Gatos, uh, very much on top of these things. And Ashley is on top of every single detail. So I'm very confident that these are the best prices we're going to get right now. The, uh, difficult thing is it's a real curve ball, uh, what's happened today with the stoppage of everything. Um, you know, all of these projects, the Sluka Field project, the North Shore project, the Riverwatch project. The, what else am I missing? There's another big one I missed. Oh, Community Center. And then this project are all going to be, uh, unfortunately bragging well into the summer, if not beyond. You know, given the, the bizarre events of the last week or so.
Well, they'll have, all the contracts have to re-mobilize after a shutdown. So it's always, it's always costly in terms of.
But, you know, if, if you approve this tonight, you're doing the best you can do to keep things moving around, along. And then we'll get, at least get the doors ordered, get them in production. You know, perhaps there can be some outdoor work done by the electricians. I'm not sure if it's, uh, it's really not essential work. This is a life or death kind of stuff. So it's probably going to have to wait.
I don't think you're going to construe this as essential work. So we'll do what we can do. And that's not, not much right now, except say yes to this proposal. Um, we'd like to, uh, again, thank Ashley for all the hard work. And I also take my hat off to the Historic Constitution District Board that, um, picked out the doors. Cause they put a lot of time and thought into that.
Absolutely.
Any other thoughts or comments? Ready to vote?
Dora?
Yes.
Cummins?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
Manetta?
Yes.
Next item.
Next item is to authorize the city manager to contract with CS Erickson an amount not to exceed fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars to install tenant electric panels, general use outlets, exit and emergency egress lighting, and electric service upgrades to the Grand Trump Depot building and Lynn Sherwood Waterfront Stadium. The administration recommends approval.
Is there a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Motioned by Scott, seconded by Dora, as near as I could tell.
Questions and comments? Got Ashley on the line. She can explain it. Ashley?
Yeah, sorry.
Did you want to say anything else about this or more, more of the same?
Uh, yeah, more of the, oh, am I muted?
I can hear you.
You did.
Pat muted me. He didn't want me to say anything.
Come on, Pat, knock it off.
Yeah, more, more of the same. Um, we're really comfortable at CS Erickson. They did our drawings for the bid package. So they're very familiar with the project and the nature of the depot in general. So we feel really good about moving forward with them.
Good local company. I'd like to, again, I'd like to see three bids, but I know you tried to do that and it didn't happen. So I'm okay with this. A good local company and I know they do good work. So I'm okay with it.
I agree with Denny. I think they'll do a fine job for us. And, uh, again, thank you for the efforts that you put into this. I appreciate it a lot.
Well, I'll echo that to everybody else out there. Um, I know CS Electric, they, they do a very, very good, Erickson does. Um, so I'm, I'm confident they'll get it done and do it in a, in a fashionable time if, when they get in there. But Ashley, you've been doing overtime on that building. So I got to tell you, not only with just the contractors and everything else that's going on, trying to get tenants and everything else, that whole depot thing. Our, my heart goes out to you because you've been working diligently for everything out there. So thank you so very much.
I would love to see them open in May.
I hope so.
So would we.
Yes, we would.
I'd like to echo that too. A- Ashley, anything you put your hands, uh, hands into, you do a great job with it. You put a lot of work into it, a lot of effort. And I, I just really appreciate it. I think we all do. I think we all recognize how hard you work and we're, we appreciate, really appreciate of all you do.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Yeah, and I agree with that. Any other comments? Think we're ready to vote?
Oops, sorry, I just lost my pen. I don't know where it could have gone. Hold on, let me grab another one.
Probably right underneath your coffee cup.
I don't drink coffee.
What are you drinking?
I am drinking coconut La Croix. All right. So Cummins?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
Dora?
Yes.
Manetta?
Yes.
That is the. Oh.
Go on more.
Okay, yeah, we have one more. We moved on off consent agenda.
Okay.
Next item.
So this next item is to approve an agreement with Wave Scooters to place scooter docks in six locations in the city with prior approval of the Public Works Director and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the necessary documents.
Our motion. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Fritz, seconded by Cummins. A big phone from Matt, from Pat.
Hello, your honor.
Okay. Hi there. So Mike, Dora, you, you asked if this be moved from the consent agenda, so I'd ask you to speak first.
Yeah, I, I did. I had some, uh, concerns with some of the stuff that was presented. I, I know council last year, um, went ahead with the offer that, uh, Colin had presented, uh, to give, uh, give him an opportunity to have a shot at starting up a, a local, local business. And I, I'm all behind that. Uh, and I have no problem with him coming back this year. Um, I just had some questions with some of the things that he was proposing. Uh, I know that this does not cover access to the boardwalk. That apparently is coming at a later time. Uh, I'm really not in favor of that. But some of these docking stations that we saw, I, I had some concerns as to, uh, the way they were attached to the light poles. And if they really used power, um, of some sort to charge the scooters. Um, and it looks like the way that some of them, uh, stick out, the scooters would stick out from the poles, uh, quite a ways into the sidewalk, which would present somewhat of a tripping hazard for folks. If they were, you know, looking at a building or not really paying attention to where they were walking on a crowded street in the middle of a summer day. I'd hate to see folks get snagged up and, and trip over them. So there was another question that I had. Some of them look to be quite large. Uh, they would take up a six foot by twenty-two foot space. Or ones that dock multiple units and, and that seemed pretty large for some areas downtown. I'm not quite sure where these will get planted. And I guess if they do use power, I was just curious as to whether, uh, gotta wait a minute. The cuckoo's going here.
That's the TikTok I've heard this whole evening.
Sorry. Um, if, my other question was if they are going to use power, um, we don't have any fees or anything associated with this. Um, the last issue of the MML magazine that everybody probably got showed, uh, Lansing and Neets Lansing. Uh, each adopted, uh, twenty-five hundred dollar per year fee for property use, uh, docking station electricity, on and on. Uh, and there's some regulations that went along with that. So I guess I'm just looking to clear the air up a little bit as to, to what we're looking at completely and, and get a better feel for it.
Well, Pat, you've got Colin on the line here. So if the two of you would, uh, address Mr. Dora's concerns. Pat, are you there?
Yeah, I am. I'm just, uh.
He looks like he's muted.
He's muted. Colin's there. Here's Colin.
Oh, there's Colin.
Yeah, Colin's here. And I, I asked Colin, he's, uh, uh, taking video classes, of course, like every other college student. I think in America now. Um, so he did have a class in statistics earlier tonight. So I'm surprised he's still conscious, uh, after that.
He probably thinks this is exciting.
I was very deliberate in the, writing the motion to, uh, provide that it would be upon, you know, approval of the Public Works Director. You did in fact approve all of the locations that are proposed tonight, except for maybe two that would be in the downtown vicinity. Um, so it's sort of an extension of what you approved last year. And I don't think Derek would approve anything that would be a, um, you know, anything that would be a real hazard. And as far as connecting to electricity, that's just not something that Collins tackled yet. Um, you know, I asked him if he knew where those were going to go. He said that's to be determined by the, uh, partner that he's working with. I don't know if he wanted to add to that, Colin.
Yeah. Uh, thank you very much for having some time for me tonight. I appreciate, um, being able to chat with you guys and answer some questions. Um, so where to start? Um, you, you threw a lot of questions out there. Would you like me to address one like specifically first?
Yeah, I guess it is a power requirement that these docks are going to need.
Yeah, so kind of involved with that is like you talked about just like the general size of them, like where they would go. Um, really like, I'm really excited, uh, to be working with Commute. Um, I was actually hoping to have, uh, Peter Depp, who is like the main owner, um, be on the call tonight and be able to answer like really specific questions to commute that I like couldn't answer as well. Um, but obviously like with the virus and just everything going on nowadays, uh, he wasn't available tonight. Um, but he said anything that I can't answer, um, just write down and I'll be able to get you guys that, um, as soon as possible from him. Um, but so they actually are powered as a plant. And they could either be connected to like a light post, um, and the power could be like routed into the pool. Um, and I think Pat said there's even like some panels on there, correct, that would be pretty easy to access the power with. Um, but actually mainly to start, um, there's, you could also like screw them into the ground. But to start, I'd like to do all the freestanding models. Um, and the freestanding models would just be like most ideal because if we put them in a location that ends up like, it doesn't fit how we liked, or it just doesn't like, it doesn't work well there. Well, now we can move it without having a, any installation because it was just simply freestanding. So the freestanding, um, there's about like a three-foot hole at the bottom or like a stabilizer. Um, and then from there, if you have like the three feet, um, you were concerned about like the scooter sticking out. The scooter will go out to five feet. So that's including the additional three feet. So it's only going to take up like a five-foot, um, or six-foot area. Uh, so like we can be pretty precise in knowing like when we, uh, choose a location, how far into the sidewalk using measurements. So, uh, in like, I don't know if you guys have copies of that, um, packet I submitted. Uh, but you can see like on the ground, I chalked off an initial area of where like that base would be. And then an additional area of like where the end of the scooter would go to. So if there's, um, a power outlet right there, all it has to do is be plugged in. Otherwise, uh, Commute works with like a local electrician and they can actually install the power outlet. So I'll, I'll break. You guys can throw some stuff my way. Um, otherwise I'll just keep labyrinth. So feel free to just throw in something at any time.
Uh, well, that answers my one question as to if there was power usage associated with it. And apparently there are. Um, I don't know what kind of electricity these things use or require. Not my expertise either. So.
Um, on top of that, uh, so Commute, um, who runs this, who runs the docks, uh, they're, they've done a lot of testing. Like it's their main company. My main company is like the scooter provision service. Um, so like they're pretty knowledgeable about how, how all that works specifically. Um, but he told me it's not really a noticeable drop. And like even go off that, I charged and placed scooters, um, from Steve Vinx, uh, Westell's location all summer. And he said he didn't notice, um, any increase in power draw. So that was thirty scooters being charged. Uh, it's a lithium battery. When the scooters aren't being charged, which is most of the time, um, it's like the scooter is only getting charged when it needs to, when it's plugged in. So there's going to be a lot of extra open slots. So these things won't constantly always be drawing energy. Um, and it's just one like high quality, modern lithium battery. So it's really not that much of an energy drop. But say it's noticeable or say Grand Haven is concerned about that, um, Commute is definitely willing to work, um, on some kind of like recompensation to make sure that that energy is accounted for. And you guys, uh, are filling the, fill in the blanks that you need to, I guess.
Can you, um, tell us a little bit more about some, some of these we looked at in the pictures that showed docks that were, what, twenty-two feet long?
Yeah. Um, so last year, uh, I had some pretty, um, temporary docks off Amazon. They were like meant for bike racks actually. And like a scooter happened to fit, which I found out, which were great for a little bit. Then they started to get deformed and say that little kid walking along could come up and jump on it and knock all the scooters over. Um, so really a, a big issue I saw last year, um, was like the cleanliness of the zones. Um, that's something like I, I want to reflect like a good image on the city I operate within. Um, and just have like a really clean image and a nice user experience. And coming up to a zone where there's like a wooden post with a QR code on it, like that's not that official. And just having to lift your scooter into rack, that's not very official. So mainly what I was looking for with these docks is one, now I don't have to go out and collect the scooters and charge them. So I can be spending all that time, um, like connecting with Pat or connecting with, uh, chief of police. Um, just handling like more issues, like being more on top of the company. Uh, and it will be easier for the customer to have like a firm infrastructure to interact with by just being able to plug one of these scooters right in. Uh, and it's, it's really just going to clean up the whole process. And I think it's going to give it, um, like a lot, lot better image. And I'm really excited to like have that firmness. be able to collect like a lot of data and just really grow like from the startup image into like more of like a professional company. And that's what I'm hoping like these docks will enable me to do.
Well, I trust in Derek's judgment for placing them around downtown in areas that, that won't, you know, be involved with hazard for folks walking around. So, I don't think that'll be an issue now that I know that, you know, that he's involved with that also. I guess, questions, they can go ahead with them.
Before we, just to add on to that, and before we ever would do like a firm installer, like something on a like light post, like we can start with the freestanding so that there's no actual physical, like obstruction into cement with a drill or anything. And that way, it's like we can test it out and we can move it if it doesn't work.
Yeah, I think that would be the way to go.
Cool.
And just to point out, I've worked really well with Colin. I figure we can, we can figure out something that's not gonna impede pedestrian traffic. But also about the electrical portion, we're moving with our electric CS Ericsson. There's some really neat opportunities for us to understand what the draw is on these electricity, the electricity use and his, the areas that he might, might need it. That we have it, that we wouldn't want to put it on an additional electrical service. So, I think we can, we can figure it out. I don't know all the details at the moment.
Yeah, Derek.
Go ahead.
Okay, I would expect the electrical draw to be relatively low.
They're not much, much.
We could definitely ascertain exactly what the kilowatt hour draw is just off the specs from Commute. And we know how much kilowatt hours cost us on our meter, so that would not be, you know, that's just math. I just want to ask Colin, as long as we're here on the record and city council's all tuned in, what is the age at which you need to wear a helmet to ride one of these? Isn't there a minimum age or maximum age?
Yeah, the age, according to like the Michigan helmet laws, which we discussed at last year's city council meeting, was determined to be nineteen. And that's actually like according to how all the other companies operate, I really looked into that, how like they're enforcing that. And it's, it's pretty much through the onboarding process. You guide the customer through all your rules, through my rules as a company, through the rules regulated by Michigan and then through the rules regulated by like the city, which was Grand Haven. And so, I really just inform them. I make them like check a box and confirm that they're following all the rules and they take responsibility for the ride, for the scooter and et cetera. And it's, I can't actually like enforce, you know, be at all thirty scooters all the time to make sure like someone's nineteen. But through like the onboarding process, it's nineteen and I just have to make sure the customer is aware.
Well, how about if I ask it a different way, if, you know, I would suggest that if you rent somebody that's under nineteen and they don't have a helmet, we'd revoke your license and ask you to move them off public property. You know, we want to make sure that kids under nineteen are wearing helmets. And that, you know, you can put it up on a sign, you can warn them, you can explain to them, but at the end of the day, you can ask for their ID and if they're not nineteen and they don't have a helmet, they can't ride. That, you know, I don't know how to, how to follow through on that because these are remote and you're not necessarily there when they're picking them up, right?
Right. I'm, that's like the whole, kind of like premise of why it's like able to be profitable is if I had to be at each thirty scooter all the time, like it wouldn't, there wouldn't be the accessibility of you being at the beach and being able to ride one back into downtown Grand Haven. So, yeah, like I can't be at all the scooters, but I definitely like see what you're saying. And so, like the company I'm working with on my software this year is a new company called Spring. So, technically, it's like not just my app. It's like they take like this general template of like a scooter app, they apply WaveCo to it and then allow me to operate through it with all like the capabilities of that app. So, it's like I can't just like tell my team to like enable like the ID thing, but I could speak with them about that. And if it becomes an issue, we could look at, I've connected with the company that actually rents like helmets. So, like there could be some infrastructure for the helmets around downtown.
Okay, we could work with you to get a helmet program going and the, like the idea, Derek's got a sign shop. We could make some menacing signs that say, you know, no helmet, ticket equals ticket. And we could have some enforcement going and make sure that they know we mean business, that it is serious, that, you know, there's a reason for those helmet laws, that the kids of a certain age need to wear helmets. And I think if we're gonna allow those in town, whether it's Colin or somebody else, we ought to be prepared to, to enforce those rules and make sure kids are wearing helmets.
And I didn't mean for any of that about the helmets to come off like, oh, like I don't care. It's just like, for a second, it seemed like you were trying to put it like on me, but I would really love to like work with the, or work with the city in any, any manner to like improve like where, like there's some issues being seen. Like that's what I've really enjoyed about like presenting the city council and working closely with you, Pat and Derek. It's, it's kind of been like a team effort and it's been really cool to like improve the city that I grew up in, so.
I, I really like the idea, Pat, of the enforcement part is if we do find young adults without helmets is to actually stop them and find out their age. If not, give them a ticket or whatever else we can do, whatever we can enforce to do. That would something we have to go into enforcement on that, so. And good signage. And these, this docking system and everything you have, Colin, is that be better than what you had last year where sometimes the people just, they have to bring them back to the docking stations now because a lot of times I did see them laying around town at times in different places. And then I did see them get picked up, but it would be nice if your new app or if you ever you had, make sure that they don't return them, they keep charging them and at least, you know, you can pay your fine because every time we pick them up, we're gonna find you.
For sure. And that was something that I didn't see, like I didn't see people being able to leave them out that much last year and that was because like the docking infrastructure wasn't there. So, now it's like I can, I can continue to charge them, like just make sure I educate them like, hey, you literally just have to plug this into the dock and it rides over. Like with the docks last year, there was no like techno, technology to do that. So, it's like, hopefully, it should never happen. And if it does, I'll have the fees equipped in the software to pay those to the city of Grand Haven.
There you go.
Problem I have with this is, um, he's not a nonprofit organization, he's for profit. He's using city property and the city electricity, of course, he said he'd pay for that, but we have no fee schedule for this. I don't think we ever charged a fee for this.
Yeah, could I comment on that real quick?
Go ahead.
Um, that actually came up last year as well. And, and kind of what I said is, it's like a brand, it's like a new transportation infrastructure. You guys were really talking about Harvard Transit, about needing new, like less bulky, innovative. This is like a cheap ride. Someone could easily ride from downtown Grand Haven to the beach in ten minutes for ten bucks. Or they could sit in traffic, they could drive all over Grand Haven, take up business parking spots, cause traffic. Now, there's forty-five minutes of traffic in front of the state park because there's no other options besides a forty-five minute walk from downtown Grand Haven. So, it's like I, I really, I've really enjoyed working with like Pat and closely with the city to like provide the best possible service and I wouldn't have been able to do that without like being on city property unless I went all private property. But it's, it's a new transportation infrastructure and I think that's where like that service to the city comes from and that fee. But if you guys deemed that that wasn't enough, we could definitely talk about something. Although I'm still in startup, I'm still not gone profit yet. So, yeah, that, that's just all I have to say about that.
Okay, I just, like I said, I have a problem with somebody going on our property and then I'm using city, city electricity and getting all looked up and not paying a dime for it. I'm, you know, and if, if you weren't making money on it, if you weren't doing, you wouldn't be back this year. So, you must be, I mean, we traded out one year and it must've worked for you. I think we're good for the city too. I'm not saying it didn't. Like you said, that's a good transportation, but, but on the other hand, if you're making a profit on it and, and you're making money on it and it's a profitable organization and it's working for you, you know, I, I think we, we might want to set up a fee schedule for this. I don't know what it would be, but, but I, I think we might want to look at that.
Ryan, any thoughts?
Yeah, I have some. I see the chief's side. Have there been any, was there a lot of issues last year, chief, with the helmets or riding certain places that they weren't supposed to be or?
Hello, Mayor and Council, Jeff Hawk, Director of Public Safety again. Yeah, we did have some substantial issues last year. Number one, with the agreement that Colin had with city council, it wasn't completely fulfilled, required a fair amount of attention on my part. And the helmets, of course, are, are an issue. When somebody rents one of these skateboards, they don't come with a helmet and you have to have one on if you're under nineteen. So, there's none available. So, you kind of end up with a situation where your customer is walking off with, with the electric skateboard that is without a helmet on because there's none available and they don't think to bring one with them. So, that is an issue. That has to be solved. Or it just creates an enforcement problem for us. I mean, we can, we can write the rider a ticket, but it's almost like we're putting our customer in this position to start a ride. You know, they come without a helmet, they want to rent a scooter or a skateboard. These are actually electric skateboards under state law. And there's not a helmet available, nobody brings one with them. So, that, that's a substantial issue. And then, you know, just to ensure that, I mean, Colin's a wonderful young man, he's very ambitious. But we had some follow-through problems last year, so we need to get that squared up as, as we go forward.
Again, if we're spending staff time on this, I, you know, it's not free for the city to do that. And, and like you said, Jeff, you're spending some time on that and I think your department's spent a little time on that. And Derek, did you, did you have to go pick up any scooters or anything from around town or not?
There were a couple that we did pick up, yes.
So, we do have some staff time involved in this. I, I have a problem, I'm, I'm not charging some kind of a fee for this.
I'm in the same boat as Denny. You know, I, I think it's a great opportunity and I appreciate Colin for his efforts that he puts in to do this. But to, to go through it and not have any type of fee, and I'm not saying it has to be anything close to what other, other cities are charging. We just talked about a fellow who wants to set up a food truck and, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna get a hundred dollars a month from him. I mean, I'm not saying that wouldn't be on, out of the reason in this particular case, at least any amount is something that compensates, you know, the chief and Derek and folks for, for the effort we're putting into it plus the power usage that, we don't know what it is going to be. I'm sure it's probably minimal, but everyone else that uses any of it, they end up paying also.
I remember last year, Colin had quite the, the presentation last year and, and I think as all businesses find out, even government entities, you know, even the best plans don't always work. I appreciate you, Colin, at least laying out some of the issues you faced in 2019 and presenting some, some potential, you know, solutions for those. You know, but as the chief said, you know, follow-through is important and I see in your, your packet of materials that you're actually looking to go part-time and focus more on this. So, I think you've learning, you know, you're learning from some of those things and hopefully can put a little bit more focus in on some of the concerns that have arose. So, you have a successful business, but so that, you know, we're all so satisfied that everybody's doing this safely and we're not spending, you know, a ton of staff time on this. So, it's just, it's normal growing pains. I'm fine with, you know, I'm glad to see you back for another summer to give it another shot. I, you know, you do have a lot of challenges with being a college student and starting this up. You're working through those and fine with another, another season, another summer. I just want to clarify though, are we, I know Mike mentioned earlier that we're gonna maybe look at deciding the boardwalk or have a boardwalk discussion later on. Is that, we're gonna decide that down the road or is that a discussion that, Pat, you're looking for guidance on that tonight?
I know Colin would like to be allowed to have his scooters on the boardwalk. He's represented that the software that will be used could be programmed so that scooters ridden on the boardwalk would be governed where they would be slowed way down. But so far, I've not had any encouragement from city council. I wrote that in the report, I think it was in the packet, which is where Mike might have picked up on it, that, you know, if the council wants to consider allowing them either downtown on the sidewalks or on the boardwalk, currently you have ordinances that say they, they can't be in those locations. So, you'd need to have me go back and, and work on redrafted legislation to allow that if you wanted that to happen. Does that answer your question?
It does, yeah. I hear chief saying that these are considered, you know, electronic skateboards under state law, so that's kind of, certainly, yeah. I mean, it follows that we don't allow skateboards on our, our boardwalk. I, I'm sympathetic to Colin's argument a little bit in that, you know, we allow large bicycles to go down our boardwalk and, you know, folks ring bells and do all, all kinds of things, let you know that they're coming. And there's crowds that, that those folks have to deal with and those are even larger than what we're talking about here. Folks are on rollerblades, you know, so I, you know, I'm not opposed to a further discussion on it. Look at whether or not it may or may not make sense. Given that there's some other uses that maybe also present similar hazards or dangers that maybe we'd be concerned with here, especially the speed. I mean, I think that would be a key piece of it and they wouldn't want these things to zoom in all around on our boardwalk. But if they were at a very low speed, slower than a bicycle would be or somebody rollerblading, I, you know, maybe it has some similarities where it wouldn't be as much of a concern. That is all my points at this point.
Right now, I think I'd like some more information from, you know, I, we hear so from Chief of Police and Derek and they've got some staff time involved in this and, and there's concerns with the chief on some of this stuff. And, and I would like to postpone this vote until we get some more information. And maybe we can look at this and maybe fee schedule if we think we want to go that way. But, but I'm, I'm, I think we ought to postpone this vote and, and get some more information on it.
I'm right. Last year, when this came to us, of course, it was a startup and we were encouraging a local young man to start a business and cooperate with us and something that he didn't necessarily have to cooperate with us on, but gave us some level of control, some level of reassurance and cooperation. And so, that's why we went with what we did last year. And now if there's concerns about costs and fees and such and those aren't addressed in our current proposal, then postponing may be appropriate. But I think we'll, at some point, we'll need to have an answer for them. There's a difference between obviously nonprofit and a company that doesn't make a profit. Those are very different things. As I'm sure Colin has come to realize. But I think that, I think it's an endeavor worth pursuing. I think that we shouldn't, we shouldn't make it prohibitive or put hurdles so high that it can't be met. If we feel that we should postpone to iron out a few issues or to set some relatively low and fair fee, then I guess we could go with that. I would certainly like to see the concerns of council addressed. I, I know that Chief Hawk has recommended that we not allow them on the boardwalk or in the downtown sidewalks, even at a reduced speed. So, I think that's to be considered also. And so, if we, whatever we agree to at this point, I think I'd like to be as close to a final agreement as we can make. And if it means we have to wait a little bit longer in order to come to that agreement, then let's, let's get it right. So, if there's a consensus to postpone, fine, but let's just make sure we're, we have something specific in mind we're trying to accomplish with postponement. I don't want to kick it, kick it off into the future just because we're just not comfortable. I want us to actually know what we're, what we're asking for. After hearing, after hearing what Chief Hawk said and Colin and Pat all working together and things that, and also in the packet, we got to look at it, Colin recognized all of his problems he had and he wants to amend them. That's why he's going to these different programs. He's going to, you know, the docking stations, which is totally different than what he had last year. He's solving some of his problems that he had there, also with the new software, which is gonna solve some of the, most of the problems he had. I'm, I'm willing to move forward on it. I, I think by working with Jeff and working with Pat and if there is a minimal fee, we can come back and say we have to set a fee in our fee structure that we don't even have. We, how do we know? I don't want to delay a person from their business. I mean, I run a business myself. I wouldn't want to delay him to move forward. Does he really want to spend all that money in these docking stations? Does he want to spend any more money for the new software? He doesn't know where he's gonna stand with us. At least, Colin, you can know that I'm gonna stand with you and I know you're gonna work with us. I trust you to come up with it because.
with you, and I know you're gonna work with us. I trust you to come up with it, because you've already addressed all the issues that we, that we had. I mean, Jeff said all those issues, and you laid them out, and you're gonna be working with them. So, I know we can move forward on this. I know it'll work all good.
Supposedly, he addressed those last year, too. We still had problems with them. So, I, I like to, like I said, I like to get, get exactly what our costs were last year. We don't see that right now. I don't think they're prepared to give that to us. I like to see what the staff did down here, and what it, what it did cost the city to, to go collect those things, and, and for Jeff to, whatever time he had to put in on this. I, I wouldn't mind looking at that and seeing what, seeing what the actual cost did cost us. And, and so, I think, I'm not saying I'm gonna vote no for this ever, but I'd like to postpone this vote right now until we get some more information.
When we collected scooters that had been abandoned, did we not charge for that? Did we not recover that cost?
Yeah, it was a hefty, well, not hefty, but it was a fine.
Yeah, so I mean, as far as the cost, I mean, the cost of electricity is gonna be dollars. It's not gonna be hardly anything, because these are, just aren't gonna draw very much. So, you know, the, the use of our space for the docking stations may or may not be an opportunity cost, if you're gonna use them for something else. But so, as far as our costs, I guess the biggest cost would be one of the costs is for enforcement for public safety. And so, I don't know what that cost would be, if that needs to be defined. As far as if we're going to subject this to a fee that isn't, isn't established yet, I don't know how we can make that, make an agreement now contingent on that. I think if you make an agreement now, that, that gets put off into the future, because not in, as far as I know, it's not in this proposal now. So, I mean, my concern about costs are pretty minimal. I don't think that that's a big deal. Maybe it's a potential loss of revenue for the city. Maybe if this company really takes off and becomes a big deal, we can get it from him later. So, I mean, I'm willing to postpone if that's a pleasure of Council. I'm willing to agree to this, except that I think that we should make it, we should make sure we have an early out on this, if there's a problem where we can't resolve problems. Pat, what, what would be your comment to that?
You know, at any time, it's, it's quite a discussion here. At any time Colin could set this business up on private property and run it as he feels like running it, that's completely legal and appropriate for him to set it up on private property. I think it's just easier to get locations on public property, kind of one-stop shopping. You know, he comes to one spot, he gets our approval, he's working with local government rather than working around us. Other communities that I've heard from that have had some growing pains here, have not been able to identify the vendors readily. You know, they're, they're big companies that come into the area, drop off scooters, make deals with local private property owners, and the scooters just aren't showing up. And, you know, there's very little knowledge of what's going on at the local city hall. So, it is nice that we know who the provider is, we know who to talk to about it, and I'm grateful for that. You know, we could certainly, you know, I think the, the license agreement is revocable at will by the city. You know, if he at any time violates any part of it, or we feel that it's unsafe, or, you know, we could say you can't be on city property anymore, at which time he could lift these things up and put them over on private property and continue running out scooters with no communication or contact from the city. We don't have a scooter registration program, or a, you know, a mobility, you know, we got rid of our taxi cab ordinance. We, we really don't regulate these types of conveyances on any level. We've got a lot of places that do run out the, the motor scooters, and we've never had a discussion about that at City Council, that I recall. You know, we've got Sun and Sport that rents the scooters out, and they also run out bikes. And I don't know whether they do helmets or not. You know, the fact that you're even talking about this here is kind of a, I think I pointed that out, it's sort of a benefit to the requests that you have in front of you, that you do have some regulatory authority, because you've got the, the businessperson asking you for permission. Whereas, if they were doing this on private property, they wouldn't even have to come to the city. So, that, that's a good thing. We can certainly find out what the cost would be to connect to our electric. The cost for staff, I, I don't know. I've, I would argue that last year that I had more time into it than anyone else. I, I enjoyed my times meeting with Colin, but, but it, it was somewhat time-consuming, getting things ramped up, getting it in front of City Council, drafting the agreements. But we saw it as an opportunity to have some new age mobility devices active in our downtown, and I think there, there was a lot of enthusiasm about it twelve months ago. We did have some issues last summer, did have to pick up a few of the scooters and impound them. And Colin came and collected them and did not like the invoice that he got. The police did have to remind him a few times that we expected things to be posted at each of the docking stations. And so, that did end up getting done by the end of the season. But I know it was a new experience for Colin, and perhaps this year would be smoother. But to answer your question, Val, there's a lot more than you asked. Yes, I think the agreement that's on your agenda tonight would be something. I guess I'd wanna look it up real quick, and, and I could recite to you the, the section that allows either Colin or the city to say, pack it up. You know, this isn't working.
I think it's just like a couple thirty, thirty or so days of notice or something. For three, three days, some, some number. Big difference.
Pat, I have the agreement here. Let me see if I can find it.
Pretty short.
Yeah, let's try to find it.
I have it in this jury here also.
Yeah, sixty days written notice. The sixty days written notice. We can terminate it.
So, does that, that note, option for notice to terminate, give your other guys any comfort?
Yeah, you know, my intent wasn't to, to hold him up or, or deny him the opportunity to do this. I, I just wasn't involved in it last year. I had some questions with this proposal that came out as far as, you know, use of property, use of electric, hooking these things up, you know, taking them back down, making sure everything is done correctly, and, and the city just not eating those costs for a for-profit business, as, you know, Denny had stated. Anyone else that wanted to do anything like that would end up having to pay a fee for that to happen, like the vendors that come down at Coast Guard. I mean, we charge them for a place to park. We charge them for hooking up the power and the power that they use. So, I, I just, I didn't want to set a, any type of a precedence by allowing someone to do something one way, when we're charging other people to do this, something very simple another way. That was my only concern with it all. And I guess if we come up with a fee that we add to our fee schedule for this, if he, you know, if Colin and Wave Scooters happens to luck out and not have to comply with that this year, then we'll get them next year.
Well, I mean, could we?
That's my concern.
Could we tabulate actual costs and charge them actual costs as opposed to a general fee? I don't think those would be very large numbers.
No, I don't think so either.
It'd be a lot of staff time just to figure those numbers out, that are, gonna nullify it.
So, so, so you'd pay more staff time than you'd collect? Is that what you're saying?
That's my concern.
That, if that's the case.
I have to agree on that.
That gives you an idea of the scale of the cost, which is minor.
And might I add, I'm not opposed to a fifty to a hundred dollar fee, just off the bat, you know?
For a week?
Uh, per day? No, sorry.
Well, you know, if, if we could, maybe if this were to be considered tonight, to have a, you know, to add to the termination clause that upon default by either party, you know, a fifteen-day notice could be issued. So, if there is a default condition where, you know, these scooters are laying all over the sidewalks, they're nuisance, kids are riding all over without helmets, we offer them a warning, we could probably evolve some language that would cover that. You know, I think Colin's looking for something to hang his hat on, so he can set things in motion. You know, get his order in, sign some contracts, I don't know what else. And then, doing that work to go out and, and locate physically where they're gonna go, and how he's gonna get power to them is a bit of an undertaking. It's not been done yet. So, I think if he knew that there was going to be a positive vote by Council, provided these two, three, or four things were handled, we could move forward and get this on the next virtual agenda, which may happen on April thirteenth. You may, you may have another virtual meeting.
So, you're saying that we would vote for it tonight, and then it'd be on another agenda? Or we would postpone it tonight?
I don't mind moving forward.
Okay, I'll just be quiet.
Well, you, you confused me, because you said if we could make a contingent on these two or three things, we could get a positive vote, and then you said next agenda.
Yeah, I was thinking that you could just make it clear tonight, what you have, that in order to satisfy and try to get a unanimous vote, you'd want to have a, an amount in the agreement, and a, some default language, so that the city could get out more easily. I'm not sure if I missed anything there. Was it just those two things that are concerning?
I think that would, I think that would do it for me, Pat. I think if you wanted to do that, we could postpone it and get those things hashed out and bring it back next meeting. I'm, I'm fine with that.
Is there any way we can get a vote tonight?
Well, you could vote on it tonight.
I'd like to make a motion.
Is it already, is it already on the floor?
Yes.
Yes.
And if we, if we could require that you reach an agreement. I don't know. We're almost negotiating a lifetime here during a meeting, which is kind of an awkward thing to do.
Shouldn't be doing it.
I'm gonna make a motion to postpone tell in our next meeting. I don't like the second or not, but at least I'll put it out there.
I guess I'll second it.
All right. So, we have a motion by Scott and second by Dora to postpone the agreement till our next meeting, while we iron out these details we've discussed. Any questions on that motion?
Um, no. I appreciate all the support, all the consideration. Something I might just add to that, not a counter, is it's gonna take approximately like six, six to eight weeks, once approved, to have these installed. On it, and to start the fabrication, I need a city approval. So, that will just be pushed off, which will delay like my profitable range, which will delay, just like how it comes to play in Grand Haven. So, that's just a side note, not an argument. I just wanted to allow that.
Let me put, let me put something else out there, not to you, Colin, but to Council, is that we're operating under a special meeting at this point in time, and which was called basically on eighteen hours' notice. And if something, if you can work with Pat and with city administration, we could conceivably call another special meeting at an earlier time than middle of April. Now, with everything shut down the way it is, I don't know, I don't know if any of this does you any good. But I mean, I would be open to that. If we worked something out, that can bring back to us, that would satisfy the concerns of Council, we could have a meeting on shorter notice. Would other members of Council be agreeable to that?
I'm, I'm open to that.
So am I. I'm okay with that.
Ryan, Mike, what do you think?
I'm just thinking, is there a way that we could amend this original motion to?
Absolutely.
Differ to staff to come up with a reasonable fee, not to exceed amounts, and adding an additional clause related to that fifteen days that Pat talked about, and just get this approved tonight? And I'll throw in a personal guarantee that whatever you guys decide, I will abide by.
We would be having an agreement that would be basically a blank in the form with no dollars amount to, and say we're approving this, contingent on something being written there.
I would, I agree, Ryan. I agree, Ryan, we should probably.
Go ahead.
Anyways, I agree with Ryan. There's, should be a way for us to just amend this resolution and make it work for him, so at least he can get, find out, because it's gonna take him a long time to get things started. And the longer we wait and delay it, might not even have his opportunity again. And it did prove to be out pretty decent last year for him. I think we should be able to work together with this and, and work something out tonight, so at least he can move forward. So, I'm open for a resolution of some sort, a change in it, instead of the one that you want right now. I'm, I'm not in favor of what you just proposed. So, I'm gonna vote no on the delay. So...
So, if we?
I think, I think we, I think we can work, I think we can work faster than that. I think we've done it before on different motions and that. I've seen it happen, so I think we can.
So, you would want to amend the proposal to leave open, openings in it for negotiation and approve it that way? Is that what you're saying?
We did that with the depot. I mean, to approve final rent, rent amounts, and, and we allowed staff to sign those, and you to sign the, the contract. So, we allowed staff to negotiate that amount, the final amount. So, if it's like a rental that you're looking at for the city space, I mean, I don't know, twenty bucks a, a spot that you're allowing to me, whatever, whatever it is, I mean, it sounds like this is a pretty small amount here that we're, we're worried about.
I think it is. Pat, why don't you unmute yourself a minute? So, if we, suppose that we, if we don't postpone, we amend the motion to amend the contract, to deal with certain items that we brought up today, and then approve it that way, would you be comfortable with that agreement and with our vote on that, and then you come up with a final agreement with Colin?
Yeah, I can do it either way. If you'd like me to do it that way, the alternative is we get together with Colin, and then in a few days, eighteen-hour notice, special meeting, you get together like this, and you vote on a revised contract. Either way would work for me. I think we can do a good job of it either way without any real extreme difference in the final outcome. You know, I would think within a week, we could probably have that special meeting. We just have to get a time together, and I don't think we're, you know, if you're willing to do it, I'm happy to put the meeting together. Or if you're willing to grant the authority, we can definitely iron out those details. I've heard what you've said. Colin's heard it. I'll look at the municipal league article and see what, was it Grand Rapids and East Lansing, Mike?
Uh, just Lansing and East Lansing.
Okay. See what they're charging in Lansing and East Lansing, come up with a comparable fee for Colin for the summer, and put a termination clause in the event of default. We can terminate it, and, you know, we could just, you could put that as part of your motion tonight, and then it's approved tonight. Or you can wait. We'll rejigger it and get it back to you in the next week.
All right. Well, I kind of like the idea of having us finish it tonight if we can. So, let's go ahead and have the vote on the postponement. I'm gonna vote against it. So, Linda, could you call the roll on the postponement?
Scott?
Yes.
Brett?
No.
Dora?
No.
Cummins?
No.
Manetta?
No.
All right. Now, if somebody could propose some, an amendment to the motion to deal with the various things we've discussed. I don't know how to word that.
I'll make a motion to amend this to defer to staff to negotiate with Wave Co-Scooters in relation to a rental price for dock on city property and a termination clause.
I'll second that.
Okay. Is this clear to the other guys? What was proposed for an amendment?
Yep. I, I, like I said, my intent wasn't to hold him up on this, other than to just get some facts and things straightened out a little bit. I'm perfectly comfortable with letting Pat or Ashley or whoever gets assigned to this to work out an agreement, as Ryan has stated.
And I appreciate your thoroughness, Mike.
I also want to say, Mike, I know you looked it up, and you did find the extreme prices at these other locations, which is a large, much larger community. I just hope we can be more fair and be understandable of what it really is, because I don't think those fares that they have in East Lansing would be the same as in Grand Haven. So, I'm sure I can trust it up to Pat and Ashley to do, move forward with that, and making it respectable, and still covering everything that we need to cover for them.
I agree, Mike.
All right. Well, we need to vote on the amendment, and then we'll need to vote on the amended motion. Danny, did you have something else to say?
No, no, I, I, I'm good. Okay.
Okay, thanks. All right, let's vote on the amendment.
Brett?
Yes.
Dora?
Dora?
Yes.
Cummins?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Anessa?
Yes.
Now, if there's no more discussion, let's vote, vote on the amended motion.
Just a moment.
Linda's ready.
Okay. Dora?
Yes.
Cummins?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
Anessa?
Yes. Congratulations, Colin.
Thank you very much. I've, I've really appreciated your time and the discussion, uh, and just the consideration about everything. Thank you very much.
All right, now I gotta work with Pat.
Yeah, I love it.
All right, I believe that brings us to the last of our items of new business.
Yes.
That will bring us to, uh, report by city council. Would you like to go first?
Well, I'll start out first like I'm normally do anyways, if I do start something. But, um, I wanna, uh, thank, uh, all the council members and everybody that participated in the emergency sandbagging ceremony we had. It was very educational. I learned a lot and also it was very pivotal and talking about pivotal, it's on how you hand sandbags each other. You don't turn, you just pass them back and forth, which is, makes it so much easier. When we took that wall apart, it went so fast when we did it, it was unbelievable how much you can get done doing it that way. So, and that, and also I've been wa, I walked around and went down and checked out, oh, the water level. And at one time it was at least about eight inches below our docks and I could see sand over across the, across the river, so it was pretty good. But I also made an inspection to like, I went out to see some of the projects like Sluka Field, that was before the vandalism, which I really think is really terrible, something that we have is gonna be for kids. But, um, that was looking really nice. The community center has been working on, it's, it's really looked coming along pretty good. Uh, also, everything else, the waterfront, the trees gone, I cannot believe the view that you have now as you go by there. You can see all the way out to the lake, it's unbelievable. It's just gonna be fantastic. It's too bad we had to have a stay on all of our projects that we have going here. We have so much going on, along with the infrastructure over at North Shore on top of it. We are very, very busy and this pandemic has just been utmost terrible thing that could ever happen to this whole world. I just wanna say thank you to, and a big thank you and a big thing out to all of our people that are out there, our first responders, um, anybody that's working in the hospitals and nurses, our public safety is out there, all around, everybody in this whole country is working hard for it. They said, I work hard, everybody make sure wash your hands, like they say, and the new wording is social distancing, you know, stay your distance, make sure, you know, you're, you're not there, keep your six feet away, do that because it's very, very important for all of us. I mean, that's why we're doing this virtual thing right now is because of what's going on. I just wanna say, everybody be safe and do all that's possible. And on that note, I'll leave somebody else that wants to add to it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll go. I, uh, appreciate really being able to meet tonight. Um, you know, we can be at least grateful that we have the technology to help us all stay connected and not as isolated as, uh, maybe some of us, you know, um, have been during this, this time of social distancing. But, uh, it's important that we continue our work, you know, we have a lot going on, a lot to keep an eye on. Like, like, like I said, those, those high water levels aren't going away, um, got a lot to do there. Um, but, uh, we definitely owe a huge thanks to our city staff, um, all our grocery store and restaurant workers for keeping the shelves stocked and, and food's still coming, our law enforcement, healthcare workers, other public safety, other essential folks that are gonna still, you know, stay working during this, stay at home order and our, our community really coming together to help those in need. Uh, I think our food pantries probably could still, uh, use a lot, uh, going forward. So if folks are able to donate, you know, please do. Um, you know, we have a lot of residents who are, are vulnerable and, and, and need our support, uh, as we go forward. I'm, I'm glad to see, you know, we're not shutting off water or more light and power, um, isn't shutting off any lights, uh, through other programs that they, um, have to comply with at least through April fifteenth. Um, so folks can, you know, focus their resources on where they're most appropriate. Um, but, uh, yeah, it's important that we all follow the CDC, governor and local directives that, uh, that are in place. Um, a lot of unknowns and, and struggles that we're seeing, but we're also seeing a lot of good and positives too. So we'll be stronger in the end, uh, no doubt. Uh, I attended the planning commission meeting, um, they're getting, uh, some work started on reviewing the, some zoning ordinance, uh, updates. Some of that work is coming back from the consultants. So, uh, they reviewed chapters one and two and then chapter four just came out, second Mike Fritz's comments on the sandbag training. Uh, and then I attended the board of light and power meeting, um, last Thursday. Um, they, uh, they had a presentation, uh, in relation to, um, coal ash, uh, cleanup, uh, on the, uh, on Harbor Island. Um, uh, you know, essentially the board of light and power advised, you know, that we, we do have a groundwater contamination issue. There's a lot of things that we're over allowable limits on. Um, there's been a lot of ash kinda filled in on the islands over many years, uh, even prior to, to, to their time, um, um, and, and before the days when that was maybe a concern. Um, but, um, you know, there's a lot of regulations in place that are, are governing and requiring cleanup, uh, out there. Um, you know, they've done a lot of work, Eric has over there and, and coming up with, uh, working with, uh, the DEQ and, and other entities to, to kinda get some permits going on this. Um, they're still working through some of that. Um, you know, originally they were told that they wouldn't have to worry about cleanup of ash prior to nineteen seventy-nine and then Eagle on March sixth indicated that, uh, there, there is gonna maybe potentially, uh, gonna maybe to be some cleanup, some ash placed prior to nineteen seventy-nine. Um, so they presented a remediation plan. There's a lot of challenges, especially with the high water levels right now, um, and they have some concerns about whether or not, uh, their, their plan's gonna fully work. It's a very challenging project, there's no doubt. Um, uh, but, um, you know, one of the challenges, they're concerned that, you know, they're not quite sure how this removal of coal ash will impact the groundwater, uh, and how the slurry wall is gonna work. Um, so they really kind of warned that, uh, they really wanna get the permits for this initial phase, but they're, they're indicating that, uh, there, there's a lot of work potentially, uh, more work maybe coming in the future beyond this initial phase. Uh, the board of light and power board approved up to three million for the initial phase, uh, but again indicated that this is just a fraction, um, of the potential cost and this may end up, as they put it, costing the, you know, the city millions, uh, in the end as far as cleanup goes. So there's a lot of continued discussion to have, uh, on this. Um, uh, but, uh, uh, glad to see that there's some immediate, you know, remediation work, um, moving forward. And at this point, they're going to the Eagle and saying, look, we're just waiting on permits now. Um, so, so that's being worked on. Uh, that's all I have as far as my report.
Okay, thank you.
I, um, attended the sandbag training along with, uh, Mike and Ryan, I seen Bob was there. Really some great information for folks, um, on not only making sandbags, but how to properly place them, uh, and use them in the construction of a wall. With the social distancing now of, I recommended six feet, that's gonna be a bit of a stretch to hand them back and forth, I think, but I think we'll like it. Um, also was that the planning commission meeting with Ryan? Lots of good stuff going on there, uh, along with, uh, a lot of work that they're, that they're doing on the upcoming ordinance rewrite. Been kinda just keeping a low profile around home and, and listening to the governor and some of the things that they're recommending. Definitely trying times. I had some, uh, things I was going to mention coming up, uh, but with the, uh, stay at home order now, I don't think too many people are getting out. Um, if you do happen to get out on the twenty-fifth of this month, Jersey Mike's sub shop is having a benefit. A hundred percent of their sales for that day will go to the, uh, Helen DeVos Children's Hospital, another great cause. We, uh, also have our food drive going on for a lot of the kids in need yet, um, that are off from school for all this times and families that maybe need some help. You get a chance to stop by the grocery store, just pick up a couple extra things and, uh, there's a lot of places around, you can drop them off. I know, uh, City Hall has, uh, one with a collection box that actually was sitting out front. You didn't even have to go inside, you just walk up and drop off a couple of items and help feed and take care of some of the kids, uh, for the time that we're off here. Other than that, boy, stay home, stay safe and hopefully we'll get through this.
Thanks, Mike. Danny?
I just wanna echo that, um, thank you for all the public safety and, and our health workers that are, um, fearing for, uh, this outbreak that's, uh, that's occurring now and, uh, it's tough times like everybody said and, uh, and, um, if you do get a chance to donate, um, food, uh, it's, it's, it's needed and, um, so if we, uh, if we can all work together on this thing, we'll get through it and, uh, it's gonna take some time though. I just, I think, you know, it's gonna be, it's a long, hard days, but, uh, um, pray that everybody gets through this thing safe and, uh, we know we got a great town and we got a great, great bunch of, uh, public safety officers and we got a great bunch of, uh, health, health people here too that, uh, that take care of us and, uh, and are willing to, uh, go, go, go the long road for us and, uh, and I just appreciate, uh, every one of them and, uh, and, uh, we just have to, uh, hook her down right now and, uh, and, and get through this thing, but, uh, we'll make it and, um, in the, in the, in the long run, we'll, we'll be better for it probably. Sometimes it takes hard times to make us so stronger than we are now, so. But, um, I, I'm just, I just, I'm thankful that, uh, that, uh, that we're all working together at this, that we do have the healthcare facilities that we have here and, uh, and, uh, I just, uh, wish everybody, uh, that's listening and everybody in Grand Haven know the best.
Thanks, Danny. And I'd echo all the sentiments, these are days of crisis and days of caution, days of concern, but there also need to be days of optimism and hope. So I think our focus going forward is we'll get through what we're doing now, we'll do the things we need to do to protect ourselves and to protect those around us and protect our community. We'll make the sacrifices we need to make and we'll come through this and we'll be a stronger community. So I think that, um, I think these are days of optimism, even though it looks a little bit dark right now. So there's that, there's the, uh, donation to my, to the food donations for the kids and the box out front in City Hall is, uh, for the food pantries. That, that food goes to Love and Action. I picked up a couple of times, I think, um, Pat must've picked up a couple of times as well. Um, so we've been getting donations there. Um, school closings have been a challenge for a lot of families and, cause it's tied up, you know, it's put the kids out of school and tied up families who must now take care of those kids. And the school districts have been doing a really good job of getting, uh, food out to those kids who are getting food at school in the first place. So I think the community has really come together to support everyone. I did wanna make one comment this morning in conference call with Pat and Chief Hawk and Derek. We talked about, uh, our playground equipment. City owns playground equipment in some of our parks. And last week we'd posted that equipment as having, uh, we're not sanitizing that equipment, we're not cleaning that equipment, really don't have the means to do that, is not effectively. So we posted the same, basically, we're not cleaning this, um, kinda use it at your own risk, really. That's kinda how we left it. And, uh, you know, we've had some cold weather, kids have went out there Sunday, kids are out there playing, they're wearing gloves, they're all bundled up. Uh, and, you know, the fresh air is good for them, the activity is good for them. We talked this morning about, well, hundreds of circumstances, especially with weather warming up and potential for more exposure and knowing that the virus can survive on hard surfaces, we should probably just go ahead and close down the playground equipment. Still let people use parks, still let people get fresh air, but the playground equipment itself, I think that, uh, Pat and Derek are working on some new signage, saying that, well, this is, this equipment is closed for the time being. So very unfortunate and I hate to see amenities taken away from the people, especially at a time when they could really use these things. But there again, we're trying to be safe, we're trying to keep everybody healthy, trying to, uh, stop the spread of the virus to the extent that we can. So that was conversation we had this morning. And so I guess, you know, going forward, just keep our heads about us and, um, you can do the best we can to get through and we'll be just fine. So on that note, I guess I would, um, give it over to Pat for city manager's report.
Very brief tonight, your honor, uh, just looking at April twentieth as a possible date for, uh, budget work session, you know, we'll, we'll see. Uh, you know, I've gotta get you all the budget, uh, in early April. Things have taken a, a different turn this year, so I hope I've got some, some grace this year that, that our regular time that we try to spend on budget, we've been working a lot on high water issues and now this, uh, whole situation has really absorbed just about all of our capacity and, and trying to understand and track. Uh, so it's going to be interesting, but we'll certainly get you a budget. It's also a time of transition as well in our finance department, so it's going to be a, a little different year with the budget, a lot of challenges there. Uh, but I will be getting you a budget and we will be having that work session probably on April twentieth, probably, uh, this type of format. I, I would like to think things are lifted by then, but, um, you know, if not, we can, we can do it this way and you can ask your questions in a virtual format. Um, something that's not getting a lot of play that I just wanna make you aware of is our, our waste collection concerns. Um, waste collection will continue as planned. Uh, typically April first is when the yard waste starts, we do expect that to start. Actually, I think they're going to start it this week. Um, they've got enough staff right now and we think that people have been out doing yard work. Uh, but if you think about these coming days and I, after work today, you know, with people first getting this news, when I, I drove home for a little bit and came back, just scores of people out on the sidewalk, just getting outside, walking their animals and, and, uh, getting outdoors, it seemed like a lot more than you'd usually see on a, um, you know, thirty-five degree, uh, Monday evening in March. Um, so lots of people out there. So I think what they're gonna be doing the rest of this week, looks like we got a couple nice forty-five degrees sunny days, people are gonna be out in their yards and they're gonna need to get rid of the, the yard waste. So we are gonna have, we checked with the schools, we're gonna put two thirty-yard containers at Lake Shore and two thirty-yard containers at White Pines, um, because they can't staff these places, can't have any person-to-person contact. Usually if you've ever used those drop-off locations, there's one of their employees there that helps you grab your bags of yard waste or your, your bundled up twigs and throw them in the truck, well, you're gonna have to throw them in the roll-off dumpster yourself. There won't be any staff there, um, so that'll be a little different. Uh, also, we talked a little bit about our restroom schedules. Um, that's a bit of a mixed bag because there's some inclination to not open them, uh, because of the person-to-person contact, you know, people going in and using public restrooms doesn't seem like a good thing to allow to happen during, uh, a quarantine situation. However, if we don't clean them, if we don't open them and clean them, we're gonna have scores of people out walking on our boardwalk, uh, and those people are gonna have to use the restrooms. And if, if we don't have restrooms, we get other types of health concerns. Um, so we've gotta pay attention to that as well. We, we have to maintain our sensibilities. So I've talked to Derek about possible porta-potties, possibly getting the depot bathrooms open a little early. Um, the ones that aren't winterized, that, you know, we can't turn heat on and we really can't turn those on yet, cause we might get some nights that get down into the lower twenties or even below twenty and we can't have pipes freezing. Uh, so we can't turn them on until we're sure that the weather switch. So just wanted to fill you in on a few of those things and I wanna thank, uh, Derek and Jeff and Bob for daily briefings. Uh, if anybody has any questions, reach out and contact me. And I wanna thank Bob for being our, our gopher for the food pantry. He's got a big white van and he's been running around, picking up food at the drop-off sites and bringing it over to Fulton Street. Uh, so if you do wanna drop stuff off, Mike mentioned it, I wanted to say thanks to Mike, Dora, that, you know, he's been out there beating the bushes for us. Um, you can drop stuff off here at City Hall, the YMCA or directly over to Fulton Street in the city of Grand Haven. Over in Spring Lake, you can drop stuff off at the, uh, Wesleyan Church down on the far east end of Spring Lake. Uh, they're taking donations there. So that's all I got, your honor.
All right, thank you. So we're our second call to the audience now. Same, same thing applies this first time around. Uh, we have a telephone line that's open. If you wanna call in, please do so now. Identify yourself by name and address and speak for no more than three minutes. If you get a busy signal, call back, we'll be patient. If there's, have there been any written comments, texts, emails, anything that we should read on the air?
I have not received any.
Okay.
There's nothing, there's nothing directed to council or the call to audience on Facebook.
All right. Does the phone ringing?
Did you wanna read that number again? Oh.
Doesn't, doesn't sound like the phone is ringing. Let's wait about fifteen seconds here and see if anybody calls.
Do you want to, uh, read that number again, your honor?
Yeah, let me do that, just in case somebody's trying. Yeah, let me do that, just in case somebody's trying, the number is six one six, nine three five, three two zero seven.
Come on, come on. It's uh, staying dark, it's not lighting up yet.
Well, you know, there's a slight delay here, um, I might have thought we'd get more text comments or email comments than we have.
There's been a lot of chatter, but stuff I could address on where we're at in the agenda, so.
Okay. So, nothing that we need, nothing we need to be aware of as decision makers or policymakers. Or as recipients of uh. Constructive criticism.
Nothing directly.
Well, tell you what, I think that we've given people a few seconds to call if they were going to, so. And on that note, if there's no other calls, I'm gonna use my. Gamble. During this meeting.
Where's your tape measure?
Oh, that.
Yes, the tape measure is the best.
Night everybody.